I'm sure. Okay, we'll get our meeting started at six twenty-nine and we have Dr. Skinner, Dr. Huff, all five board members, Tammy and Anna Logan present here at the tables and we'll open the other vice chair.
I.
United States and America and to the Republic for which it stands, one patient under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We want. I always want to say that.
So we have all five board members present to establish our plan. We will move to one point three, election of the board chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Steve Holiday for board chair.
I wouldn't nominate Jennifer Knight.
Excuse me.
I nominate you Jennifer Knight.
You got a second? And then for a night. We have a second here, you can't hear.
Standby.
If you press the on off button.
Okay.
You have a diaphragm, right? Clearly, it's not engineering. It's it's fully employed.
Okay, so now that the coffee maker is off, we had Steve nominate Jen, Cheyenne second that nominee. That's for rats. So do we have any discussion? We will take a vote. All in favor of Jen being the new board chair, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No. Yeah, that's what you mean, I'm gonna miss vote. And I said, Shannon. Yeah.
They could go because you're going to do that.
This is for Jana. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Um, now we move to one point four. Election of Vice Chair. You have any nominations? All second. We have a nomination for Scott Cooper for Vice Chair. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's put this to a vote. All in favor of Scott Cooper being Vice Chair, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Tammy, will you please make notes that Scott is our Vice Chair? Okay. And moving on to one point five, agenda additions, deletions, or revisions, and agenda approval. Do we have any additions, deletions, revisions, or we go straight to the two Joel?
I approve the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. And we have a first and second. And so we have a motion to approve the agenda. And we have a second, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Tammy, no, thank you. One point six, schedule an executive session to consider the appeal under step four of K L dash A R in response to apparent complaint against a staff member. I was already looking at this prior to, so I will just read what we have and then this moved on to the new Vice Chair. The board needs to schedule a time to hear complaint appeal under step four of K L dash A R. At this point, the board options are one, schedule an executive session for the next regularly scheduled board meeting on August twelfth. Or two, find an additional date to schedule a special board meeting slash executive session. So this is open for discussion on the board. What would we like to do?
I'd be in favor of adding it to the twelve.
As would I.
Okay.
Do we want to do it before or after? Before, did you say?
Um, let's see for the next. It doesn't say if we could either do it before or after on the regular board meeting. What works best?
We did it. I don't have a work contact, so Steve, do you have a work contact? If we do, would you prefer to do it before or after?
Doesn't matter. Yeah, I agree right away.
Do, uh, is there a preference for the board? Do we want to do before? Yes, I think that worked before for us. Okay, do we want to do? Is it easier for you four thirty? Is that better for you? Okay, so let's go ahead and set that to be done at four thirty in executive session. On August twelfth, the next board meeting.
And after this, what that was?
Um, yes. Yeah, thank you, Shannon. Okay. Um, two point oh, board annual organization actions. Bear with me. So the twenty twenty-four, two point one, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school board meeting scheduled. We look at that. Two point one, so this is our regular school board meetings, board work sessions, special meetings, and executive sessions.
Just to note, August isn't, but I'm not a part of that, but August isn't the twelfth, that month, it's the fourteenth.
On here. Yes, so this needs to move to Monday, August twelfth. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying? I'm pretty sure scheduled for the weekend, but I don't know. I don't mean.
I think you just carry them over from last year.
I did. That's what it was for the previous year.
We'll be trying to avoid fair, right here.
There were some conflicts because the school board members were new and hadn't had a chance. They had, there were some conflicts on that Monday, so you guys decided to just that once. Okay, sorry about that. We can move it back to Monday the twelfth. Thank you. Are there any other revisions on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the locations, I just notice it's, it is a massive amount of work for staff to be moving all of this stuff to and fro here and there and just spend hours and hours of time. Which does cost money.
Right.
Is there any opposition to just leaving the meetings here?
That would be wonderful.
I just look at them cleaning that IT staff up with two hours after. That's just to be, that's, this makes for really, I'm not, I'm not trying to cut anybody out or short anybody on anything, but that's just a lot for staff to do.
I can speak to that. Um, there's definitely some pros. We've done that before years and years ago. Um, we had them here. We didn't keep two meetings, the one in Palina and the one in Brothers. That would be, um, so we'd want to do that, but to your point, Steve, there is a huge cost savings on both the staff time as well as the technology setup and acoustics, audio is, there's a lot of pros to do.
I just remember the, the last meeting we had at State's pillar, there were must have been a thousand feet of cable there, had to be rolled up, unhandled, and it just took.
Yeah. So it will save the district money by, by doing it here, if that's the board's preference. Uh, the one caveat that would change on this, um, we've been asked the Palina September meeting, changing Palina to October because September, they've only been in school two days or something to that effect. They don't really have a good press, you know. It's a lot to put a presentation together the first day of school board, so we moved that to October.
I'm just, it took them two hours to pick up that meeting outdoors and that was a late years, it was ten thirty, eleven o'clock by the time I got out.
So, do we want to go ahead and make revisions now and say that in August, our board meeting would be here at the district office? And that Palina would move to October. Leaving Brothers exactly where it is, but change the locations for everything to be at the district office.
One other aspect, if there is a topic that we expect a large crowd, um, we would move back to the high school and the school.
Yeah.
Yes. That would be.
Are we all good for that? So just to clarify, we'd have Palina in October, Brothers in April, and every other meeting would be at the district office.
Unless it needs to be.
It needs to move for whatever reason.
Okay, so is there a motion on the table to make these adjustments?
And Chair, I'm moving to adopt the new schedule as revised. Second.
Okay, all in favor, is there a discussion? Any more discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, so two point two is the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school board roster. It is on two point two, and you can look through that and see all the different zones of the board members, superintendents, deputy assistant to superintendent. And then, um, just information, are there any changes on here that anybody saw that need to be made?
Pretty limited.
Shannon. Yeah, I was just making sure there wasn't any more changes. Um, also any weak emotion?
We're not, the school board.
I second. Okay, all in favor of keeping the school board roster the way it is, say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Uh, two point three, resolution number one, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five designations and authorizations from Ian.
This is a standard recurring resolution, number one, it's always the same thing. It designates, um, who can sign, who can apply, all those different things. Um, to avoid having two resolutions, but still make any prior activity that Joel may have done legitimate. I've added dates on there for Joel in July first through July fourteenth and then our new superintendent from seven fifteen through six thirty, so it's all just online.
And Chair, I'm moving to adopt resolution oh one, twenty-four, twenty-five, inserting Jen Knight in place of where it says four two.
I second. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Evan. Um, two point four, resolution number two. Uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, authorizing short-term inter fund limits.
Yeah, this is the same resolution every year. Anyone have any questions on this?
I move to adopt resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five. I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Um, have you moved consent agenda? Is there any discussion?
You might notice any change.
Okay.
You'll approve consent agenda.
Hey, is there discussion? Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to approve in the second on the table. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Three point eight, nutrition services, uh, review. I missed Hannah. I don't know, hold that down consent. Yeah, sorry. Nice, nice. Okay, um, four point oh, superintendent update. Looks like we're going to turn this over to Dr. Huff.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, we've got our quarterly update of our strategic plans. So this data, uh, as you remember, the board set a number of goals, uh, I believe it was February. Um, so we finished out the year and now is the time where we report on those goals and give, give an update on our progress so far. So as you know, the board set.
Before you start, is this a whole replacement or?
Yeah, I took any questions the board had and, and created made a few revisions just to address those questions. So the one that is on your table is the most updated one, uh, so it'd be the best. Tammy does an awesome job being flexible and getting us, getting us to update. So so yeah, the board set in February, uh, we had three main goal areas, instruction, unity, uh, and then our third being facilities, safety, and operation. Uh, the board took those goals and we, uh, those goal areas and need about twenty different goals, uh, about eight under each uh, that, that we are here to report on. Looking at our stoplight, we use a green, yellow, red system. So if it's green, that means the objective is complete or there's a plan in place and we're making good progress. Uh, if we mark something in yellow, that means we have a plan, but we need to make more progress or we need to make adjustments for improvement. And then finally, if it's red, we got lots of work to do in this area. So, and I say this every time I present these, I don't get paid any more, any less, whether I mark them red or green, it's just looking at kind of all our data and saying, here's, here's where I think we are. Um, so let's jump into instruction first. Goal one point one is the mediest of all these goals. Um, the board wants all students proficient reading, writing, math. This year, we've added, the board added science and social studies, so we have some metrics to share on those. Goal one point one, my slides are a little chart heavy, so if I need to slow down, just let me know. Uh, so let's look at K five readings. So we use a assessment called DIBELS, which stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills um, to assess where our kids are at. Uh, so if you look here, this shows where kids were in the fall, that beginning, where they were in the middle, and then where they were at the end. A few things I want to highlight, so if you look, uh, on it, it's probably numbers are probably a little small, so you might have glasses on. So you'll see under each of those, you see the, the thing that says N and then equals. That N means that tells us how many kids took the assessment. So, uh, in the fall, we had two hundred and fifty-nine, um, kindergartens, kindergartners take the assessment. And here's what we're going to look at, uh, the green and the blue. So those are, uh, those are positive. So that means the, the student's what they call it, core. The yellow means the student needs strategic support and the red means that a student needs intensive support. So if we stick with our kindergarten example from the beginning, you can see these kindergartners start off, they usually give this within the first month, uh, the, the students were low because they hadn't been taught the skills yet. So you see, we only had about fourteen percent of our kindergarteners um, at that spot, but then when we fast forward uh, to the end of the year, this is what we want to see. We see about seventy-three percent of our kindergarteners made that growth. Teachers did absolutely amazing job. Uh, so seventy-three percent of those students fell in that core green or blue category. We still need to do a lot of interventions for the, the rest of the students that aren't, but it's a real healthy, uh, growth that we saw there. Uh, for our first graders, uh, in the fall, we had forty-four percent were in the, uh, green and blue. And then if you look at the N for our first graders, we had seventy-three percent. So another category where we saw a, a lot of students move up, uh, up to into that core level. Um, second grade, uh, we started at forty-six percent and then ended up in sixty percent. So we still need to target some resources and intervention at that second grade level. Uh, moving on to our third graders, forty-seven percent started, uh, at that, uh, core level. And it only ended right about the same. Now, the test does get a little more complex as they move, you know, add in additional standards and skills. Um, but that's still the grade level that we need to target. So those are next year's fourth graders. So we dig in a lot, um, the teachers, they take this data and it's really just kind of an overview. And then they can do some follow-up assessments to get what are the actual skills the students are struggling in. So that third grade incoming fourth graders is, is a, an area that we're really looking at and looking at what skills they need. In fourth grade, uh, they went from fifty-three up to sixty-four, so a little bit of growth, but still not up to our standard. Um, so that's another grade level that we need to target for a lot of improvement. And then the similar with fifth grade, we need to target, uh, those would be our uh, incoming sixth graders, uh, working with Marcus to make sure we have the resources at the sixth grade to, to get the intervention for those students.
Just before you leave that, just their question about how to read this. If, if you look at it vertically, you know, this is what we talked about, vertical alignment. Yeah. If you've got seventy-three percent of your kids in kindergarten who have achieved the blue, green, or good steps and good and great. Uh, and then by fifth grade, you drop down to just, you know, forty, fifty percent there. Shouldn't you see those exceptional kids retaining their exceptional skills as content gets more difficult? Yeah. A grade by grade, instead of falling off, isn't that where the work needs to happen?
Certainly.
Suggest we don't have that vertical alignment that holds the kindergarten all the way down to the grade.
Yeah, in each test, you know, it's covering like the grade level skills, so it changes a lot, but yeah, the, the hope, the plan is that hey, if you're green, blue in kindergarten, then great, you've got that foundation, you need to be green, blue, the, the rest. So that's something that I know, you know, one of Dr. Skinner's specialties is getting that, um, getting those scores.
Because what this suggests to me is that where we're really struggling in the district is in reinforcement. It's not so much the teaching, it's the reinforcement of the skills.
Yeah.
That kids have as they move through the progression. We leave kids behind as they, which we've seen in math and other areas.
Yeah, retaining and maintaining what they have and then growing each, each year.
And are there specific strategies for doing that when you can identify that pattern? I have no idea. I'm not curriculum expert.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you make coffee? So we can make the coffee, we just can't be quiet.
Well, I don't.
To me, that's where, well, getting inside, that's where our focus is and has to be.
And then the focus does change, like you were saying, from each year. So kindergarten and first grade, you're doing things like make-believe words, which we're going to talk about that, being a sound instructional practice as well, you know, you want to be, you know, real word, you know, so but each year, that's something that kind of falls off. So once the phonological awareness and the phonics piece gets pretty solid and it's, you know, more like, so if we, each year, the test is changing, so obviously it's not the apples to apples because you're going without the grade levels, but yes, you're right, you should be able to maintain that phonology, and add to it on it and add that to the vocabulary, you know, so, yeah, you have to maintain and grow to the next skill. And so, I mean, we're going to have to break that down and go and see what parts are missing, you know, where the gap actually, you know, is, but.
Joel, what's this important in the classroom for the grades as you get higher? Because I know we really push for eights at K through three, but where are we?
Different services, that would be a whole other presentation that I think would actually be fascinating for the board to hear of what we do. There's, um, title programs, they do small groups, so they break the students up into different ability levels to work on certain things. I know the teachers also, um, do kind of there's additional diagnostic tests, kind of like I was saying, where they can say, okay, this student really struggles with phonics or whatever. So then they pull a phonics group. Um, so that's something that would be really thinking informative for the board and something we can bring back to you.
Okay, I would like to see that. How that rolls through, like Scott said, there
Yeah.
Are we dipping when we get to the upper classes? Are we, you know, do we have time? Do teachers have the resources for that?
How much time are they getting?
Yeah.
Who's providing the intervention and what?
Right.
And Joel, the DIBELS and the A R reading, are those the best that we have?
You know, we're looking at, it's a really good question. We're looking at what's our assessment system currently, and then how can we better align it to make sure that we're, um, one, assessing the right things and two, uh, that all our assessments kind of connect where it's not this kind of disjointed assessment system. So that's something that Dr. uh, Skinner has already talked about and, and something we're going to look into. Okay. A five reading, you just looked at. So now let's talk about, uh, grades six through twelve. Uh, how we've traditionally measured this is we've looked at, um, our students passing their English course. So every student takes an English class every, every grade, every day. Um, so here's the distribution of grades, uh, from, uh, all those students based on trimester three. So we had, um, looks like we have about eighty-one, eighty-two percent get an A, B, or C, and then we had about nineteen percent get a D or F. Um, so that's how we're looking at it, but then we also looked at two different pilots, if the board, um, we've talked about this. Because sometimes if you're just passing your class, does that demonstrate, to a sense, it demonstrates skill that you can read and write proficiently, but we'd like to have kind of a deeper level of where our students are at. So one of the pilots we did this year, um, was the ASVAB. So in the ASVAB, we had, uh, thirty-six sophomores, ten juniors, and four seniors take the ASVAB. Uh, the ASVAB, if you're at the fiftieth percentile, that means you're kind of average, like right averaging the country, that's kind of the average score, fiftieth percentile. So what you see, uh, up there is where the average that our students performed percentile-wise. So we were above the fiftieth percentile with everything but that first one, verbal ability. Um, so that's something, and, and we've never done this before as a pilot, so that's something I kind of want to dig in and say like, well, how are they assessing that? What does that look like to maybe get some more information on what that looks like? What I love about the ASVAB is you know, we all have kids that, that show up in our schools and they, uh, might struggle with traditional math and English. But let's say they've worked on their dad's car forever and like the ASVAB has that bottom one mechanical comprehension, auto and shop information. So it really gives us information on those students that might struggle in the traditional metrics, but really have some skills that are important. Auto and shop information. So it really gives us information on those students that might struggle in the traditional metrics, but really have some skills that are important. Um, this is just from Google. So if there is like a military recruiter, what Google says is the minimum, minimal enlistment percentiles. It really is dependent on job, the job in there. But this is at least what Google says, um, minimal enlistment percentiles are. So. Um, at least our averages is clearing those. But again, it's dependent on job. I'm not an ASVAB expert, so. Um, so that's one uh, one sample pilot that we did this year to kind of dig deeper of. What do our kids really know versus just, just grades? And again, we are looking to your question, Cheyenne, at a better aligned assessment system.
Hey, I want, can I go back really quick to the elementary?
Yeah.
Because this was our first year in instituting Witten Wisdom.
Yeah.
In which we were told that it's gonna dramatically raise scores and do all this wonderful stuff. Can we get a comparison of? What, like what our scores were last year and what they are this year?
Uh, yeah, we definitely pull that together and then. I think this is the same, I think it's the second year. But yeah, we can, we can get that.
So on your ASVAB slide.
Yeah.
Got the minimum enlistment scores at the bottom.
Yeah.
Then you've got this military attention score.
That's like an overall that AFQT. I don't know uh what the AFQT score is or what that means. I think it's probably a summary score. Um, so we want to kind of dig deeper. If, if we decide to. Roll out ASVAB further, we want to explore that and work with our recruiters that really are the experts in that, right?
And, and so I don't know how these thirty six sophomores, teenagers, and four seniors were selected. But do we, that's a representative sample or is that?
So what we did was we actually had our Avid classes take it, which are naturally. Yeah, yeah. So it's all our Avid students. So it, it kind of is a, a good. Range of, you know, a good sample of our, our general population.
You know, it is, except for those who didn't all have super preparation for study skills and.
Hopefully, they're better.
So, yeah, that might not be a representative.
Yeah. So that's, that's just how it kind of works, but.
So Joel, what do we have for the middle school level then, since you said? We need something different.
Couldn't have given me a better, so we did a pilot at the middle school.
Oh, okay. I was like, you jumped from middle school to high school eventually, don't come home to me.
So uh, at the middle school, we also piloted um a program this year called iReady. And um iReady is, a lot of districts actually use it for a tag screener. So it's a little higher. Level. Uh, but one thing I love about the um iReady reports is if you look down at the bottom, so you've got the overall placement. But then you see down at the bottom, placement by domain. And this gets into what areas, what actual skills our students are doing well at and where they're struggling. So you can see uh for our middle schools, phonological awareness, awareness, phonics, high frequency words. Those students can read well, you know, reading fluently. Where you see um we start to dip is uh, and, and this is the main skill of. Both, I would say, middle school and high school is the comprehension piece and the analysis piece. So here you can see, our students are reading well. But we gotta really focus on those comprehension of both literary and informational texts. And that's where our students are struggling on that. So it's great to see. An assessment kind of break it down into skill levels. So then we can target and work with our teachers to design instruction that, that meets those, those gaps. So that was another pilot. So um we piloted two assessments and then, you know, our, our job is to. Now figure out what worked and what's the best way to align a K twelve alignment uh system, assessment system.
So if I'm reading that right, only the green and the shaded green is grade level, because yellow is actually one grade level below?
Yeah, you know, that's what it is. This, a lot of districts use this as a tag screener though, so it's. You want, always want to look at multiple measures. Um, but yeah, that's, you are reading that right, at least on this particular assessment. Yeah. So it's. Go ahead.
The goal of these pilots, the part of the goal was to have a calibration mechanism to look at the state benchmarking test to see if it made any sense.
Yeah.
Do we have a way to cross compare?
Yes.
To?
Yeah. Um, we can look at how we can do it. Now you're talking my language. Yeah, we can, we can pull up the students' um iReady score and then look at their um. Their OSAT score and then see, are these correlated? Cause then we can better identify, okay, we've got now two measures that this student either does need intervention or doesn't need intervention.
Can we do that at the next meeting?
There's nothing I'd like to be more. Yeah.
Like beating you.
Yeah.
And that to me is the.
Cause yeah.
The prize in this. If this benchmark doesn't make any sense at all, I guess is no. But we'll see.
And it's good. It's good to get a different, cause I mean, we've all taken tests before and some days we just have a bad day and, you know, something happened at home and, and you don't do well. So. The more of these kind of multiple measures, not like we want to over test kids.
And some tests are just stupid.
They're, they're. All right. Another chart from guys. Uh, okay, so I presented this actually in the winter. So if you look at the blue. Long to bottom, you see K through twelve, so that's each grade level. The blue is the percentage of students that were proficient, scored proficient on their winter assessment. The yellow is the percentage of students that scored proficient on their spring assessment. So for example, if we start with kindergarten, you see a big jump. Um, granted, they usually do a different, so like in the winter, they'll do, for example, like informational, and then in the spring, they'll do narrative. So it's a different genre of writing, but you can see, um, we see a dip. Uh, in three, four, five, uh, but then you see it start to grow and we're looking at our high school, we're seeing. You know, generally around ninety percent proficient at the high school level. So students, um, kind of the point earlier we were making about vertical alignment. Of reading scores, you can see a good, the longer the student are in the system, the, the better writers, they're at least, you know, the, the higher number. For passing proficient, so.
If this junior class on the same boat with AP and, I mean, there's a huge dip in our juniors.
Yeah, yeah, that would be something we want to explore more. And it's also um a tricky piece at the high school level is. We're on trimesters, so not every student has an English class each trimester. So this just shows. The scores of those students that were in the English class. So it's not a perfect apples to apples comparison, but it is kind of the best we have at, at this point.
Well, that, that ten to eleven, that's where we switch the curriculum focus from writing intensive to literature. It's a.
Potentially, I'd want to dig, I'd want to dig into that.
Writing along with that.
Yeah.
Literature.
And I know when, you know, I know kind of juniors, that writing one twenty one, one twenty two is where the writing really takes off and they're really exposed to a deeper, deeper kind of rigor of writing. So. Um, I'd want to explore what is going on at that junior year with that dip.
That's a big problem.
Yeah.
Well, I know we saw a lot in the testing, Scott, I think it was last meeting, where it's just, you know, they're in all these AP and. The, the college courses. So I just am curious if that's.
Or you can also think uh in the spring, yeah, if you're a junior, you're taking five, you know, potentially four or five AP tests. You might be tired of, of rushing in your junior English class, you might maybe phone it in a little bit. So um, that's something that we probably want to dig into.
The other question would be in third grade, isn't that where we like double down on the math instruction, we all make sure that will?
The tricky thing at the third grade, that's where the shift from learning to read to reading to learn. And I think that does have some implications in the kind of writing tasks. Um, it's something we want to dig in deeper. Cause it's a fairly, and, and I, if I remember, this was a fairly similar trend to previous years where. You know, K one, two is okay, and then three, four, five, and then we kind of did, did our way back up. So it's um, something we definitely would, could explore more.
I think the focus too on that fifth grade to sixth grade, cause they didn't, I mean, they didn't dip, but they're not, they don't have a growth. And then they're coming into middle school with, you know, now seven classes a day and whatever their schedules are. It's, it's a drastic change to also still be. Lower, not at your grade level.
Interesting. Another interesting thing to think about just is where, and guys, we only scheduled thirty minutes, so I do just shoot it up. But. Like, there's this practice called inter-rater reliability, where our. Are our teachers all scoring things at the same way? You know, what if one person scores something proficient and not? So that would be another piece that we'd say is. Hey, maybe we have our, you know, middle school teachers grade a few, fifth grade, you, you know, is the. Are we reliable in, in our grading? That would be another piece I'd look at with, if you're seeing a big swing.
Are they reading in a book or on a computer?
Are they writing on a book?
No, for when they're, uh, when they're reading.
When they're reading.
When they read, are they reading out of a book or on a computer? Cause I know a lot of the kids when I was like helping out, they're, they're. I'm just wondering the correlation.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because they're, we were always putting them on the computer, on the iPad, on the, they're not actually like, they're not picking out a book and reading it. They're constantly on a device.
I think students have a, have a little of both, but I've definitely heard pushback, rightfully so, that like. Get our kids off screens, you know, twelve hours a day. Uh, and you can get a, you know, a book or a newspaper.
I remember when I was helping with like the first and second graders, everything was on the computer.
Yeah.
They were reading and taking their tests and they didn't have, they weren't reading out of books. So.
Yeah, definitely. All right, jumping real quick into social studies. Um, social studies, uh, the board asked, this was something new this year of. How are students doing on social studies? At the K five level, the, the best assessment we have. Um, each teacher provides a grade uh on the report card that says. Um, whether the student demonstrates understanding of grade level social studies content. Dr. Skinner asked me this earlier, so the E means exceeding, these are elementary grades. Uh, M's are meetings, you got a meeting plus meeting. And then P is progressive and then N is not progressing. So that's the distribution um. Of students marks uh K five.
And what, what curriculum are we using for social studies and science at the K five level when we don't have an actual curriculum? So is this going off of the unit? Is it going off of?
Yeah, so typically, like, for example, I want to say at the fourth grade level, um, the, they call them mods. There's like a US history mod, it's part of the English curriculum. Then I know the teacher, also teachers also use supplemental curriculums for. Um, so like the core is just the, the English curriculum. And then I think we use something called use science for science and then other kind of supplemental materials. Uh, similarly, the uh six twelve distribution of social studies grades. So we're at um, looks like eighty seven percent of students uh scored, uh, got a C or better. On thirteen uh, got a D or an F. Uh, jumping over to science, K five science, uh, distribution of marks from trimester three. Uh, fairly similar, similar to social studies.
Hey Joel, how many kids do we have, six through twelve roughly?
Sixty twelve, eight hu, you know, let's say eight hundred at the high school, seventy five at Pioneer. Thousand. I'd say between fourteen and sixteen hundred. Six twelve. So that's. Sorry. Good guy, all right, I won't remember my guess. I said between fourteen and sixteen. Now I'm gonna be way off. Uh, all right, six, six twelve, science. Um, again, we're at eighty seven percent, um, A through C, thirteen percent D, D and F. Okay, A five math. Uh, we use, we implemented a program called Imagine Math during COVID, which was. Great in the sense that it gave students a differentiated, kind of individualized. Math program that they could, you know, they took the assessment, then they'd have these activities that they could do based on where they're at.
On the screen.
On the screen. Um, so, and then there's, there's this benchmark assessment with it. Um, again, they take this fall, winter, spring. It's not, it's not great. It, it worked well because it gave kids an ability to have a differentiated, as you know, schools were going through craziness code. We are replacing this program. So this was actually ended our, we had a three-year contract, we've ended that. So this was the last mark. There's like a K two pathway with benchmark assessment and a three, five, and they always clash, but. Um, either way, we're about thirty seven percent students proficient. Um, and about sixty three, if my math's right, um, level one and two. So this is assessment again, that we kind of want to do a correlation of where kids are at with, where students are at with, with other measures. Um, that's just how they were on this assessment, this assessment is, is kind of discontinued. Uh, K twelve math, uh, distribution of grades, very, it's very similar. Um, interesting if you look at social studies, science and math, the distributions of A through Fs, uh, it's, it's always around eighty seven percent or C or better. Um. Thirteen percent D and F. And again, we did that six, eight pilot. Uh, iReady, in addition to the reading, also has a uh. Has a math component. So here you can see, um, and again, this was kind of the first time we used the test, kind of figuring it out. It does tell you which areas, uh, domains, they call it, our students are doing better on. Um. So we're discussing, you know, how much we continue with iReady, do we shift, um, all those things. I hate to tell you all, that was our first indicator. One point one is done. Uh, so one point two, and don't worry, that was the longest one. Uh, one point two, complete a successful math, science, and ELD curriculum adoption. Uh, we've done K five math, six, eight math, and uh nine, twelve, if you remember, we're postponing while a pilot for EdGems, I'll be the ones made it. We adopted all our ELD uh curriculum and then science curriculum. Um, we're gonna come back with some options. I think it's the next agenda item. So I just couldn't do a green checkmark yet on, on those ones. Uh, goal one point three, increase the number of instructional assistants providing academic support. Uh. Previous year, twenty two, twenty three, we had fifty three instructional positions. Uh, we had sixty nine this year, so an increase there. We got a green light. Um, our next steps, we have, Madras got this big grant to, to train uh. Uh, particularly sped IAs, and we were able to secure some spots at that um in August. So Grant's working to get some people trained. Uh, I also put a next step is we need to find ways to celebrate our IAs and classified stat. So that's one of uh Dr. Skinner's coming in with days and celebrations, because I think that culture piece is so important. Um, and then also uh, coming up with a, implement a twenty four, twenty five specific um instructional assistant training plan. So not that we just have a, a body with kids, but that person is trained and knows what to do and, and can really uh leverage that person in that position.
Joel, do you know how many sped IAs we currently have or Jay?
We can, we can report that back.
Um, I just like.
Spelled specific.
Yeah, and then I'd like to compare that to how many spots.
Yeah.
We, we're, we're able to get out of Madras.
So that is only sped IAs. So yeah, and then we, we could maybe look at, and we just kind of had to budge our way in there and they were kind of.
I just mean, like, if we have eight and only three are going to training, like what you do for the other five type scenario, you know, do you have someone bringing back? Something to teach the remainder, make sure we're not.
I maybe make the suggestion that we have a rather large audience tonight. We're using a lot of acronyms. Maybe we could deacronym the.
Special, special education. That's a great, uh, and then IAs are instructional assistants. So those are, are, you know, adults in the class working with kids, some of the best people you will ever. So, yes, thanks for that. And that twenty three, twenty four SY, SY is schoolier. And I don't know if that's an official acronym or just something I say. All right, goal one point four, ensure horizontal and vertical alignment through consistent levels of support services and quality curriculum. So what we've done, our completed actions. Um, this one got moved up. If you see on our stoplights, if you see an arrow on them. That means this moved up from yellow to green, or you'll see some down arrows. So uh, we did some math, vertical curriculum alignment. Um, as the board requested, we updated the organizational chart and presented that, I'd say, a couple months ago. And we've got uh a, a new copy to bring in in August, so we'll present on that. And then we also made a lot of leverage on the P E teacher and curricular, uh, or sorry, counselor horizontal alignment. We've hired a teacher, um. A P E teacher at Steen's pillar where there wasn't a P E teacher. And then uh, we've also added. We had student support positions on those, because we couldn't find a counselor. Uh, Marcus and Jay worked really hard and. Uh, recruited and we got a full-time licensed counselor. And then we have another um person, counselor obtaining their license. So we'll. Have two full-time counselors as well as um Patty Schmitz uh was a kind of halftime. At Steen's pillar, uh, we were able to increase that FTE and was able to increase that FTE through the budgeting process. And so she'll be full-time next year serving GMH Steen's pillar. I think we're gonna. Figure out some rural schools, it's the next piece that's not clear quite yet. So we've made a lot of progress in the horizontal alignment there. Um, next steps, uh, Carrie has done an awesome job. She's found some time in her August in-service schedule. To get our math department, social studies department, science and performing arts departments to do K twelve vertical alignment. This is something that we've talked about. For years. So we've carved out um some hours in our August back-to-school time to get those, uh, you know, the elementary. Social studies department with the, with the uh middle school. So that way they're talking and, and kind of aligning their uh expectations and, you know, curriculum and whatnot. So.
It's a weird English language arts.
English language arts during that time has a writing training, I want to say. Um, so we'll have to figure out another time, there's an October. English language arts during that time has a writing training, I want to say, um, so we'll have to figure out another time, there's an October P E day. That will work to kind of get them, they, I think we have someone coming in to do a special writing training, so they were able to do that. We won't forget them though.
I'd suggest your green light is a little ambitious.
We'll, we'll officially change the record to yellow. Uh, all right, and then horizontal alignment, and this is hot off the presses. So we are exploring, um, Eric, uh, has been gracious, and one of our things of making sure, um. Students across the grade levels have equal services, and right now Steen's pillar doesn't have a library. Um, they will go over to Crooked River, I believe, so, um, Eric is working with his team to potentially relocate. Uh, technology, uh, and we're exploring that, uh, maybe by the winter, have a, a library at Steen's pillar. You heard it first here, so, um, so yeah, we're, we're really working on getting that horizontal alignment of services for students.
All right, what about the space for Chris and Martin?
That's another piece that we're currently exploring, um, there's a couple options there that were still, still really early on in those stages, but. But that's something, I can at least say, I'm, I'm pretty sure Eric's gonna move. We, we gotta wait, I'm not quite confident saying exactly what, what we're at yet, we just kind of have some brainstorming right now.
What about horizontal alignment for elementary performing arts?
I like that, performing arts is coming up next. Mr. Cooper, you could not give me a better, uh, goal one point five. Uh, enhance the performing arts program and increase student participation, so what we've done, um, we've reassembled our performing arts improvement team. Uh, Mr. Huffman and I met with, um, the, the high school teachers, uh. Choir, band and drama, um, and we have a list, it man is probably about fifteen to twenty to-do. Uh, actions that we believe we can put in place to recruit more students. Uh, the district also funded additional performing arts opportunities for students, this picture, uh, down here. That's, uh, Mr. Dunaway, and he revived the Shakespeare festival trip, so this had, I guess, been on hold for years and years. And I think one of the biggest things about creating and growing a, a program is. Doing fun things with kids, that, that they want to come, they want to show up, so this was a, a really fun, successful trip. Uh, that they were able to pull off, I want to say this spring. There again is, uh, this other picture is Jacob Schuler up there with, with the students, um. Performing, so there is some real energy behind the performing arts. Um, our next steps, uh, there is something really excited that they wanted me to share was, uh, Shakespeare in the Park. So we did a Shakespeare play, uh, through the high school, uh, in the wintertime, they have been asked by, I'm not sure who. To do a Shakespeare in the Park, uh. So they're taking their plan, they're doing it this summer, so that'll be a great thing to get those kids plugged in, um, throughout the summer, so that's been really cool. Uh, they're also partnering, I saw Mr. Sh- uh, Mr. Dunaway and Mr. Schuler, there's a Shrek play. I don't know if you guys have heard of this, uh, it's a summer program, so they're plugged in with that, lots of younger kids in the community. Putting on a Shrek play this summer, so I think the, the biggest thing, and we've seen this with. Those programs that we've historically done really like, you know, volleyball and, uh, wrestling. When you can build the kids' programs at a young age, it gets them hooked, so they, they stick with it, so that's something exciting.
Will those deeds be published on our website?
Find those, it's not technically a school district thing, it's, uh, I know a lot of staff are involved. Shrek is this weekend, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get that out. We've also set time. So, um, we are pulling all our performing arts teachers together, we've scheduled some time in August, and one of the things to your question is. At that meeting, what is our horizontal alignment and how can we improve that, so we've scheduled time to attack that issue, um.
Have you been to pull the performing arts teacher in from Barnesview or Crooked River, or we don't have a performing arts teacher?
We'll get the, uh, that currently is part of their, uh, elective kind of wheel thing, so. Yeah, so no, we, uh, we're pulling everyone that teaches performing arts, plus those specials teachers together to, to kind of troubleshoot that. That horizontal line piece. And I'll report back in September. I'm gonna bring a great report in September.
Can we at least put elementary alignment on the goal sheet?
Yeah, you can do that for sure. Okay, one point six, implement a high-quality AP program and increase the number of students passing, uh, AP exams. So up here you have, uh, the number of students who have completed at least one AP course, so. Uh, we don't have freshman students, we don't have an AP course, but if you look here, it picks up fifty-four, uh, tenth graders. Uh, eighty-seven eleventh graders and fifty-five seniors for a total of a hundred and ninety-six. Uh, high schoolers, uh, took at least one AP course. And then, um, down here, this bar graph, this shows the percentage of students that scored a three or better. And why that's significant is when you score a three or better, a lot of colleges recognize that and you can get some additional credit. Um, so we're, we're darn near the, the best we've ever done. Um, so in twenty-twenty-three, there were sixty-three percent scored and we're down to sixty-one percent. But one thing I want to note and highlight to the board, if you look down here, the number of exams that we took. So last year, uh, there were seventy-eight, this year there was a hundred and nineteen. So even though that passing rate went down two percent, where we get, took way more, uh, a significant increase, so I think that's a big, a big win. Um, next steps on this, I recommend, uh, we continue, uh, our AP and senior year opportunities committee. Uh, Jake Huffman, uh, Bree Van Ropel do an awesome job of partnering with board numbers to, to keep that in front of parents, keep that. Initiative moving forward, and then I also want to, um, this picture I put up here, this is from the end-of-year academic awards. And this is something that I think, Mr. Cooper, this was a big thing, we have to celebrate academics just as much as we celebrate athletics. And this was really cool, and a shout out to Darren and Kessie is, this is a picture of an, from an assembly that, um. Teachers are there, parents come, students come, and they, they give out academic awards, just like, you know, we see in with the, uh, athletics. So that's something we really need to continue, because I think we could really need to celebrate that.
So Joel, on your, the bottom numbers, so we had sixty-seven AP students, but they took. Like, two, basically two tests each, in a sense.
Yeah, so, so potentially, you know, each student could probably take junior year, senior, probably four AP classes. So they don't have to take the test, the test is completely optional, they sign up, they proctor it usually on a. On a Saturday, I want to say, um. They're during the day, oh, those are during, yeah, the SAT is on the, the Saturdays, so they take those in class, but it's completely optional, so, um, so yeah, sixty-seven kids. Uh, took a total of a hundred and nineteen, uh, assessments. Here's another exciting one, uh, goal one point seven, provide a robust career in technical education. Uh, courses with industry certifications, and this is where I really think Kirk County does a, does a great service to students where, um. We are prioritizing real-world work skills that, that students can get, we do have some areas to, to grow in this, though. Um, first with the celebrations. If you look, um, I'll start over here with work-based learning, so last year, and work-based learning, um, is. Internships, um, it could be, uh, if a student, uh, there's Ryan Cochran's there, and he can place people in jobs. Students can also, if a student has a job, they can get hours for it, so I think a next step for us is to kind of. Disaggregate that, to say, where do these come from, but, but looking at this data. We had five hundred and five students take part in work-based learning up from three hundred and thirty-one, so that means our students are out there in the real world. Learning real-world soft skills, um, and whatnot. Uh, student organizations, so you'll look here, for example, Ag Science three hundred and fourteen, so those are the number of students that are involved in like. I believe that one's FFA, I would, I would say, so students that are connected to an organization outside of class. Within that field, so, um, there's a construction student organization, there's a manufacturing student organization, so. That's a real good sign where students are getting connected in these clubs outside of class. And then this industry-recognized credential, and this is where I think I'm going to challenge, um, our school district, myself. Uh, having kids leave school with an industry-recognized certification. Is huge, because that means they can graduate high school, go to a job site, say, hey, I have this welding certification or something. This dropped this last year, because I believe, I want to say it was health science students, we stopped offering the first aid card. Now it's primarily for cost, so here's my next step. I, I'm gonna work with Jake, who's an awesome team over there, to identify each one of our strands, construction, ge- uh, graphic design, business, manufacturing. Each one of our strands, we want to identify three potential industry certifications that students can get. And then we want to remove the financial barriers for that, so I'm gonna go after a ton of grants. Um, but we want to, we want to say, hey, go in this strand, and here's the three certifications, so that's where I think our, our next three, our next steps are on that. And something that I think would really benefit students and families, so. That's, uh, the plan there, uh, we're also going to explore opportunities in Vet Tech. Uh, we, we already do some internships, but we think that's an area we can expand. We got a, uh, the board asked, asked for a CTE pathways chart, so we'll get you that in, in August. Um, we've got a really cool saddle-up project, which was a partnership through a large grant through Meta, that, um, sort of excited to report out on. And then we're also getting it back to, the board needs to get a monthly CTE report. Um, that kind of shifted, I think, kind of went away this year, or shifted to bi-monthly, we're gonna start that, uh, to be a monthly report again, so you'll get that, that every month. To kind of stay in the loop on what's going on with each of those strands.
Joel, do we meet with any of like our business owners or potential companies, but. Because it just seems very odd that we have so many programs and only offer four certificates, one, and they're all in Ag Science. We don't have potential partners in construction, welding, I mean, we have hundreds of contractors in this area. For those, we don't have welding listed on there.
Yeah. Falls under the, the Ag Science, but I, but I think, uh.
So is one of those four certificates in welding, what are the four certificates under Ag Science?
I'd have to dig into that, say what those are specifically, but I think to your point. That's, uh, that's a deficient area that I think we can do a lot better in, and I think will really help students, um, so we can come back, I want to say. I think by October and say, hey, here are the three certifications that we're gonna go for, or at least try to. Try to make, because it, it does take some alignment of, of classes and whatnot, but each one of those subjects is supposed to have a, uh. An industry partner that the teachers meet with to kind of keep a pulse on what's happening in that industry, um, so that's more information I can bring back.
Do we have any medical or dental field certification?
Health science, I think we, what that would fall under, and I don't know off the top of my head what exactly, um. Those partnerships are, but that's. Good fields that we should be making some partnerships with.
And just to clarify on the work-based learning, you're gonna section out. The hours that Kirk County is, is giving or setting kids up for, as opposed to the kids who went out and got their own jobs. And turned in like their pay stuff, I would like to see the breakdown.
Because we can give, you know, if students are out there working, you know, skills, we can get them credit for, and we want to, we just want to say like, oh, these are the ones that students, you know, have a job and are getting credit for. Versus, these are the internships that we have close kids in, so yeah, we can decide.
I'd be interested in knowing what field they are, but, and then also, can you report back to what businesses or who these teachers are working with?
Yeah, industry partners.
I'm just baffled by only having four, we have so many programs, and we only have four recognized credentials. And they're all in the same, and Ag may be a big, like you said, welding may be in there, like, it may be a large topic, but. I don't know, we have a lot of pathways that don't seem to go to.
I think there's a big opportunity here to, uh, hook kids up with, with some credentials that we're really.
So while we're there, I believe driver's ed falls under technical education, weren't we not going to get a report this month about subsidizing driver's ed costs?
Yeah, I believe, we should have a board from the E S D, so I can follow up with them. I can get that. You want me to give another presentation tonight, Scott, I think we got four.
I would think that driver's ed would fall on here, Scott's right, if they come out with, so maybe they're under it, maybe they're one of the Ag Science.
Yeah, and we talked about in that conversation, I remember looking at a pathway to get students, um, C D Ls, uh, as well if they hit the age requirement, so.
The fundamental problem, E S D is charging kids eight hundred dollars to take that class, and not surprisingly, no one's taking them. We got a bunch of unlicensed kids running around threatening all the rest of us, so what can we do to make that attainable and affordable again? Remember that whole discussion?
But I know you missed any other. All right, let's jump over to one point eight, increase the number of students earning college credit through dual credit, this is another. I think real hallmark that our high school does really well, so you can look, uh, this top one, dual credits earned at C C H S. So these are the number of credits, so ninth graders earn five hundred and ten credits, tenth graders earn three hundred and twenty-eight, eleventh graders earn nine hundred and four. Twelfth graders earn eight hundred and threes, for a total, uh, two thousand five hundred and forty-five credits. Uh, so that's the total number of credits, under here it says how many students earn those credits, so eighty-one at the ninth grade. Fifty-four at the tenth grade, uh, ninety-one, and then seventy-seven. I talked with Mr. Huffman, and this is something we have to get the word out on, because that saves parents so much money. Um, so that average cost of credit while at C C H S is right around a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that can be discounted substantially if parents have turned in a free and reduced lunch form. So another reason that families do, and those income limits are so high. And that's compared to a hundred and fifty dollars compared to, if you go to Western Oregon, it's about three hundred and sixty-five dollars of credit, U of O, two hundred and ninety-nine, E O U. So it's, it's essentially, students are getting credits half off, uh, by taking them at the high school. And then it also counts, why they call it dual, dual credit, it also counts for their high school diploma, so. Um, we need to continue to get the word out to families, uh, and brainstorming with Mr. Huffman. We've talked about, uh, you know, all this web, all this information is on the website, but it's buried, and I, I don't know a lot of families who sit around and. You know, go in the depths of the Kirk County High School website. So we're thinking of making a dual-credit pamphlet that is mailed home in color at the start of every year, so that way parents have something in their hands that they can see. Like, here's how much you can save, here's what you can do, and here's who you can contact, uh, to, to learn more, so I, I think that's kind of our next step. A big shout out to the high school, uh, they were able to complete the individual dual-credit tracker, and if you've been around for a while, it's actually a huge deal. Because in the past, it was, it was on to the student and family to track what credits they've had, and call all these people. Um, Bree Van Ropel, Jake Huffman, um, big shout out, now the high school is tracking that, so. As students finish up their senior, they get a report up here of all your credits, so, yeah, yeah, if you have a graduate and senior, you know that that's actually a really big deal. Um, and it's, and a huge task, so, so shout out to them.
So, that's a stretch goal for you on this, that I would encourage you to embrace, this year COCC announced the first time. They had a high school student who graduated from the high school and got an Ph.D. at COCC at the same time, which was amazing. A homeschool kid, who had, you know, had the flexibility to put the effort in, but I'll bet you that if we tried. We could map a path for a kid who wanted to do that with our system, to be able to do some accelerated coursework and outside, online coursework. And we could teach kids to the point where they could watch the process of paying for the dual degree, you talk about savings, that'd be amazing, I bet we could get there. Yeah, and again, you can have your college paid for.
Well, what dual credits are freshmen getting if they don't have AP classes?
That's the, uh, I believe, I want to say freshman success class, where the teachers articulated that with a university, so, and all students take that. Uh, or I think we're scheduled for it, so, I'm not sure which university that's, Eastern Oregon, so every freshman can earn Eastern Oregon credits.
So they get six credits for freshman success, so eighty-one students and five hundred and ten credits, you're six point two credits. So does that class?
Oh, and honors biology, so there's, there's two options there, so most classes are worth three, if it's a dual credit, it's worth three, so it looks like some kids took that. Freshman success, and then the honors.
Honors, English, offer, biology, just biology.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be pressure to me. We're done with instruction, door, that's the longest one, I'm right around twenty minutes, right here, yeah. All right, these next ones should go pretty quick, uh, so, community, goal two, and Cadet Quarterly Board Superintendent. We did, we had four of those, they were fairly well-attended, and, um, next steps, the board superintendent determined we want to continue these to, for next year. Uh, goal two point two, increase the number of volunteers and awareness of vol- volunteer opportunities in school. Um, down here, you've got some Crooked River parents helping out, uh, at a, I think a jog-a-thon or end-of-year thing. This is actually, I thought this was cool, I saw this when I say, this is Judge Wade Whiting, who's a judge. He's got like four kids, and he is still volunteering to come, I think he comes on Constitution Day or something and presents a lesson, so it just shows. Everyone can volunteer, I thought that was really cool, so, uh, we have created a new volunteer interest forum. Uh, we've created a new volunteer flow system that I'll share, it's the next slide. As well as we've reached out to any organization that we've presented, community organization, um, we've reached out to say, hey, can we come? Uh, this summer, this fall, and, um. We've reached out to say, hey, can we come this summer, this fall and present? And I think the board's. Been willing to volunteer for that as well. So we'll get, I think we've got a date for a couple. I think I'm still waiting to hear back from Rotary. So once we have all those dates, we'll send those out to the board. Maybe you guys want to, want to come. Just real quickly on the volunteer flow system. So right now, I think our problem is. Regardless of what you want to do, if you're a parent who wants to go on a field trip, if you're a retiree that wants to read. Or if you're a community member that wants to help paint the dugout. You have to go through, everyone has to go through background check and process and trainings. And then you just get dumped into this, not dumped. There, there's this pool, especially that's like, hey, anyone who's cleared. And it's, I think around nineteen hundred people. What's tough is everyone's grouped together, even though everyone has a different. Ability and desire to help out. So what we've done, and Jay Weeks helping on this. We've created, once people are background checked, they'll get this volunteer interest ability, availability form. And what that will do is it will help us sort our volunteers. So rather than just putting everyone in one big pool, we'll be able to say, oh, this is a retiree who wants to come in, wants that we can read. Or this is someone who wants to, is free in the summer and wants to help with a maintenance project or, or something. So. We're kicking that off this fall, and I think it really should, should help with a lot of things.
Joel, are you on the people coming into the schools? Are you talking with multiple local businesses or just our large ones? Cause I know I was contacting, you guys did a day at the middle school or something and. Seemed like, you know, like police, fire, meta, there was like a large. But like small, we have a lot of small businesses in this town that have no idea that this would be happening. Is that something that we reach out to?
Yeah.
All of the community members?
What I can do on the career fair pieces, that's typically ran by, I want to say, building administrators or Ryan Cochrane, our C T person. So we can, we can just share that feedback that, hey, let's, let's try to get it out there that anyone interested can, can join those.
Or maybe you could put it in like the paper or something. Hey, we're looking at this week. You know, and if you'd like to come in and present, or that I think you're missing a lot of fields that kids may be interested in.
Yeah. All right. Goal two point three, improve family and community access to school curriculum library. This was actually interesting because this was like a big deal at this time a year ago. And I, I think we were able to kind of pull this together. We created a C C S D curriculum library. There's a library database that can be accessed from, you know, any person's phone or a website. We enhanced access at the back to school nights, as well as we've reformatted the syllabi for grades six through twelve to bring them up to policy. Next steps, we have an elementary back to school open house will be Thursday, August twenty-nine, middle school, high school. This was a request from the board is on a separate day, Tuesday. September third, and then we'll continue to update our master curriculum list with any newly adopted curriculum. Two point four, provide weekly school and district communications. So we have on our website. Jason Carr created just this depository of all our weekly and monthly communications. Our next step, as we figure out what exactly to do with that director of communication position, we just have to keep an eye on this to make sure the communication piece. Stands to a level that, that helps the, the community and parents. So we'll just continue to keep a focus on that.
If we do carry through with the listening sessions, will they be added to this year's?
Say that one more time?
Our listening sessions weren't advertised.
Okay.
So we need to make sure we stick with that or they get added.
Guys, conferences, I put a red, I just conferences. We're like well above ninety percent at our elementaries. She just, our conference turnout at the middle school and high school. And, and it's like the older your student is, the, the less likely your, your parents will show up to conferences. So. Mr. Huffman and his team, they tried a conference plus model to add additional events during conferences. We're still working. It's still not where we want to be. So we're kind of back to the drawing board on what we need to do to get more, particularly high school parents to attend conferences.
I will add the, I, I feel like the high school teachers, I think communicate a bit more than. The elementary level does. I think you get a lot of bulk information when you go to elementary conferences. Whereas I get an update like from a high school teacher that. Like we are having D N F day. So like they, they make you aware, like throughout the term or trimester. I think steps along the way. I mean, I still attend conferences that I can make, but I think they do a good job at. I mean, check, checking in or checking in along the way. I don't know how you want to say that, but. You might, you might kind of take that into consideration with the older kids that you, you do get communication from teachers. Some you don't, but. Some you do.
We made it to the third one, right on, right on time.
I thought we were supposed to stop saying D N F day, but enhanced learning opportunity day.
All the emails this year still said D N F day. So all right, I know we updated that.
Goal three point one, completed successful superintendent hiring process. Check, read light. People don't know. Doctor, we've been onboarding since April, so we wanted to really make sure we hit the ground running. So she's been working. Kind of on the side for, for quite some time. So. Goal three point two, I put this one red just because we're kind of back to the drawing board. Assess district facilities through long range planning and explore potential bond options. So I'm sure we'll hear much more about this kind of moving forward. But, you know, we attempted to make twenty twenty-four bond, didn't, didn't pass. So now we're leaving and his team coming back and coming up with new plans. So. Three point three, maintain a strong and stable financial position, completed actions. He adopted a twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Anna gives some awesome monthly reports, keeps everyone informed and is always here to serve and answered. Any financial question. So green, green light there. I also, this is kind of cool. I put this article, this was out a couple of days ago. Bucking the straight trend, Kirk County School District enrollment and finances in good shape. Compared to a lot of the headlines throughout the spring were districts across the state really struggling. Establish and maintain effective, clearly written policies to help guide district operations. Tammy has done an awesome job of, we found like one policy was uploaded and weren't quite sure where that came from. So we did a, a full audit of. We went back, I think, through every policy to check the date and make sure it aligned with what the board had said. So I believe. That is nearly a hundred percent done. And we're just cleaning up a, a couple pieces really close there. And then also I, I put on here. The board did assemble a rental rights policy section of the website that pulled all those policies together for parents. Next step, we have a policy work session scheduled for August twentieth. Eric is also exploring a software called Swibby. I wrote it down. I just have to talk so much. I'm running out of my slides. That would help us better manage policies. And you could check, like one thing I've heard the board say is looking at, well, what was the last three versions? So it would get us starting on a process that would allow us to do that. So him and his team are exploring that.
Yes, basically, F I M B L I.
I heard Swibby. Goal three point five, enhance safety and security measures. Two awesome S R Os up there. Officer Kaufman. Came back and helped us out. So the board funded an additional S R O. You have a list, I never present this, but you have a list of the security upgrades we've done this year. I put it in front of you if you're interested on that. Leland does just an amazing job keeping us, staying on top and identifying any areas of security that we. We need to enhance. So we'll meet in August and we need to apply enforcement. We'll establish the, the projects for twenty-four, twenty-five. So.
What's our S R O situation for?
You know, standing in the, for the police department, I think is a little tricky. So we've reached out to schedule a meeting. I don't know if that date's been set yet. So that's one thing that's on our radar is making sure we hopefully can get that third S R O. Because I believe the funding is there and then troubleshooting if we can't, what, what do we do? So.
Does he retire? Then he unretired, then he re-retired.
No, Officer Kaufman has committed to me another year. So love that guy.
Can you try to follow up on a date?
Yeah, date for the. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Ensure all students have access to a school counselor, green light. This is up. I got an up arrow from the yellow because we've hired Jay, did an amazing job. Recruiting with Marcus, hired two licensed counselors, once, once in the program getting your license. And then, like I said, we increased the part-time counselor to full-time. The counselors have a meeting planned in early August to start aligning their practices.
So Joel, can you clarify, is this, this got really. It became a, a big topic was the license and becoming licensed. So that, that one becoming licensed. Did she write or he write reports? Are they?
Depends on what part of their program it is. That's something I can dig into. I'm not sure exactly when that, when that hits. Because I know that was a concern that, particularly around like self-harm screeners or suicide screeners, they needed a licensed counselor.
I know the counselors that reached out this past year, their problem was their caseloads were a lot because they had. People that were helping or whatever it was, that they couldn't write reports. So. By law, they can only carry so many patients, students, however you want to label that, to keep their licenses. So we're missing the mark somewhere and we need to make sure that the counselors we have is enough to spread across. The amount of students. So no one loses their license and the fact that we're overloaded somewhere. So I just want to be very clear. That the one coming in, obtaining his or her license can aid in that. Because you would put that counselor in that same predicament if he or she is the only one able to write reports.
So yeah, we're, we'll definitely follow up on what exactly it means by it. So, yeah, we'll have three counselors. We, you know, I think, I think it's Sean Swick got moved from the middle school that, or high school down the middle school. So he'll be up there. So we'll have three full-time. One at Pioneer, two at the middle school, and then one at each elementary. So we're, we're definitely making progress, but.
I think our one at Pioneer shift because there's, you know, sixty, seventy kids there. So that's the need we can shift to make sure that caseloads are.
That's definitely something.
Kind of even or spread out. So I just want to make sure that was the biggest topic brought by the counselors this past year.
Can you clarify one thing though in that statement? My, my, we've talked here about ratios and council systems. And my last understanding, because this keeps shifting, was there's no requirement for a certain number. There's a recommendation. From Department of Education, but not a requirement for ratios. It's a good idea and totally.
And that's what I don't know.
Could we clarify that? I, I believe it's a recommended ratio. I don't believe there's a law on there. I think the hiccup was if counselors, because that ratio is getting so big that counselors. I can't do this. So.
Good practice.
Yeah.
We should really know what the law is.
It is a, it is a recommendation, not a law. But let's, but I'll confirm that.
But what it does is it burns out your counselors. So for example, we had a middle school counselor job posted for how many years, Jay?
Twenty-two.
Then you can't fill it because when they look at, I'm going to be one counselor for six hundred kids. They're like, no, thank you. I'm not going to do that. That's just ridiculous. So it has to do with, you know.
Yeah.
And then there is something about putting their license in jeopardy.
And I don't know what that number is. I don't, I don't know. I know that.
It's a hundred and seventy. The recommendation, I believe, might be a hundred.
We, we can look into it just to make sure we're getting guys the right information around this.
I agree with Jessica. We can look at it from both angles, the education requirement and the licensing.
Yeah.
It seems like the state side of it, who licensed it was becoming the issue with the caseloads some of our counselors had. And what that number is, I don't honestly know. So I haven't, I didn't research any of that. And I wasn't told like, hey, I'm twenty-five students over. But I know the caseload for some of our counselors this past year was way too many. So, yeah.
I think this might be, we're close. Three point seven, connect all students to at least one extra. We have maintained our Kirk County Connect initiative through various grants opportunities. I put yellow because I think we can do better. I really want to go after getting an after-school activity van. Because for those kids that rely on the, the bus, they, they can't do after-school clubs because then they can't get a, get a ride home. So that's my personal goal is to figure out an after-school bus van. That, oh, three point eight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on this because I'm presenting, I think, later. Four point four is our athletic training plan. That's it. Those, those are your strategic goals. Timeline, we adopted these in February. You got one update in April. Here's your July update. We still need to schedule. The summer, fall board retreat work session, because that's where we say, okay, this was this year. What do we want to change? What do we want to keep? Then you'll get another report from me, hopefully under an hour in January twenty twenty-five.
Get some water.
Tammy got me three of that. Tammy got me four and Jake, Jake took one. So.
He didn't need all four, Jake. It's okay.
Thank you, sir, for that. Yeah, very informative. Four point two, science curriculum adoption. Here to give Joel a break.
Well, then he needed a dollar. Are you turning back to scheduling her?
Yeah, I was in my calendar. You're going to come back to schedule that at the end.
Yeah, I think it's Dr. Sims' first agenda item.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
All right. I am back here with curriculum adoption, specifically middle school and high school science. We're okay. Whoa.
Very.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions. Jessica emailed me a couple of questions, asking just a few more clarifying. Pieces about the high school science adoption. So this is a screenshot from the very first. Very first slideshow I did a couple of months ago about the different curriculums. So this was the high school one. It's inspired by McGraw-Hill. The high school science versus the middle school science. High school science only had five approved O D E curriculums on their list. And three of those out of the five were reviewed. They were pared down to that because of those that worked with Google Classroom. As our platform that we deliver. That we deliver a lot of our content for, for our high school kid. So in the review process, the selection committee, which was made up by our, by our high school of science teachers, they gave it five stars. They actually went into textbook adoption, thinking like, oh, yeah, like textbooks don't usually provide us what we need. And we have to do a lot of things. And they came out actually really excited by Inspire Science. Because it works well with Google Classrooms and their teacher systems that are already in place. There were plenty of future resources and even some new labs that they hadn't seen or heard about or been using. That provided new opportunities for students and then student materials could be printed or delivered digitally. Because they are also very aware that our kids spend a lot of time in front of their computers and on their phones. And so all of our teachers really wanted to make sure that whatever they picked, they could print out any of the pieces of it. The community review gave it four out of five stars. There were two that chose to give comments on the middle school. That did not choose to give any comments on the high school because of time. And other reasons. One said that they should adopt as long as materials were all, also available in the high school. In case parents or anybody wanted to see, they wanted them to make sure that they were at the high school as well as at the district office to review. Review. One of the members said, other texts seem to be okay. Biology specifically was an issue. And three said adopt with no restrictions. So I gave it a four out of five stars, a couple of those. A couple of those pieces are easy to do, you know, put those materials in the high school as well as happen here at the district office. So again, that was at the main board meeting. Let's go ahead, Joel. Selection committee feedback. All, also again, so to go back to kind of some of the things that our selection committee, our teacher group said. The all core subjects have materials available. So one of the things that they found with high school science in the past. Is that they would have a good biology textbook and maybe a good earth science textbook, but the chemistry one and physics one would not be their ideal choices. So for Inspire with McGraw-Hill, they actually had textbooks that had all the major core areas of science, earth science, biology, chemistry, and physics. This, these books or this curriculum aligns to the next generation science standards. These are the science standards that we use. They had engaging and flexible content for both teachers and students. Plenty of English language learner supports. Again, works well with Google Classroom. And courses that go beyond the three or four course model will still need additional resources. So that was one of the. Just one of the pieces of feedback, like A P physics, A P chemistry, honors biology, those go beyond those three course models. And they would need additional supplements, but that's nothing new. Review committee feedback. So just a couple of more specific quotes. Inspire supports the high school three and four course models. Inspire offers flexible content for students and encourages group discussion and multiple perspectives. Teacher and student friendly and content adheres to standards. Labs correlate to materials being taught would recommend having a few textbooks available for parents to review at the library if someone has questions with material. And then biology was concerning because it advocated to evaluate student misconceptions and how to clarify these misconceptions or preconceptions as if there is only one correct answer. And that was a concern. And that was, um, a concern with the teacher text, not the student text.
Do you have an example?
Um, if I remember. I would like to say I'm going to remember correctly, but I don't want to. I don't want to misremember and say that. I think, uh, just in general, you know, textbooks, teacher textbooks will tell you like, you know, see what kids know about this, about how the Earth was formed or about how rock formations are formed. Um, I don't remember the specific ones for biology. And, you know, make sure to let kids know that this is the process for evolution or this is the process for volcanoes or this is the process. And so I if I remember correctly, in the biology one, there were a couple of sidebars about maybe some of those, uh, contentious or controversial issues that may be cleared of a misconception, um, that this reviewer has thought, well, is that really, is there really only one correct answer? Or is that really a misconception that can just be cleared up one way? So. All right. So the other thing that the board and, uh, review committee requests that you guys asked me for, um, and the reason why we're doing some more on this presentation is Jessica asked me for some additional information on the high school curriculum and data to go along with it. Um, I presented the data on our OSAS science scores at that last one, but because we have so few kids take the OSAS uh, in science, didn't, could bring it back, but it's not a really good representative sample. Doesn't really tell us how our high, or how our kids are doing at the high school science test. I don't think it's reliable data. Um, they asked us to talk about some curriculum supplements. So what do we do for some more hands-on learning? Uh, Dr. Skinner has a lot of good experience and many actually admin in our district has some good experience, experience with what's called FOS kits. And they are kits for hands-on learning, kits for experiments. Um, in case your curriculum kind of leaves that behind or doesn't provide enough opportunities to do that. So there are plenty of companies that offer curriculum supplements like those kits for experimental, air experience, experiential or hands-on learning. FOS is just one of them. Um, and also we looked at or between the last couple of meetings and this one, we looked at that middle school style curriculum and looked at some adjustments, um, based on some feedback that we've gotten. Um, I kind of presented this at the last meeting about lab grown meat. We can take that question out. We can change that question. We can make it a more open-ended question. Um, looking through the curriculum in terms of leading questions, what is there? Uh, what can be adjusted? And.
I think, Carrie, I have the leading question. This is one of the ones right here is climate change. Is there even a debate?
Yeah.
So it's not just leading, it's telling them. It's pretty much like scientific inquiry is over. This is the only option. Looking throughout a lot of the curriculum, there's more than just one leading question.
Yeah. Yeah. If you, I have looked into that unit, um, quite a bit as one of the ones that we said that they're opened up with a leading question or, or had some controversial topics in there. Um, and they do actually in there present some multi-sided or multi-perspectives. Does it seem like it at the first set? No. So that would be some work that some of our teachers might have to do with this one. Um, and then making sure that we are presenting controversial topics according to Kirk County School District Policy I N B, which says that controversial topics are fine. It's the multiple perspectives. Um, it's letting parents be aware of what's being taught and allowing those parental rights to be like, let me see this. Let me talk about this. Let me find alternatives. And then you also asked, or there was a consensus asking about a different curriculum that wasn't originally looked at. Um, it is an O D E, uh, approved curriculum. And I did, I had Julia Newhouse go back and kind of take a cursory look at Carolina, which is a different curriculum. Um, still, like I said, O D E approved on first cursory, just heard she said, looks quite a bit like style in terms of it's digital. It's considered an open science education platform. Um, and so many of the materials, many of the topics, the sequence of the the sequence of the content presented is really similar. It was at the end of the year, so she really didn't have a good chance to dive into it or to take it to her team much. Um, but she would be willing to dive into it a little bit more if we needed her to. Caroline also has science kits that come with it. Okay. So again, with the middle school science curriculum, based on some of the feedback, um, from some of the review committee uh, and some other concerns that we've heard, want to make sure that if style is adopted, that both sides of all controversial material are presented that we can remove the lab grown meat or adjust that. So it is a different question. Remove all leading questions from curriculum and make sure that there are plenty of, um, supplements, hands-on or experiential learning available within the curriculum. Okay. So we have in front of you two curriculum school style at the middle school and Inspire Science at the high school. Um, you have in your board packet, a couple of possibilities for, uh, motions that you could make, but I went ahead. This is the new piece that's out of the board packet. This was just finished up and put on your desks today. Uh, just the last slide was adjusted. Um, as a board, you guys get to kind of discuss and decide about these adoptions.
So Carrie, how are the controversial topics then relayed to parents? What, what is, you say it's allowed in the policy, just need to, I guess, enlighten the parents or give them a heads up and tell how the teachers or you with the director, are you going to do that?
Yeah, I think that teachers at the beginning of their year, when they send out information to parents or when they provide their syllabi to parents as they have in the past. And, um, especially at middle school, all of those require a signature and like, here's the content that we're going to cover. Here's the place for you to sign. In the syllabi, we've required them to have a, uh, objection to materials policy or that piece of the policy that says parents can opt out. They can ask for difference. Um, they can contact their teachers about any of this. We certainly can put out a more, you know, widespread communication from my office around those. Um, and then I always, I have all that curriculum in my office and it's available for people who want to review it here.
So Carrie, can I ask why we would want to adopt a curriculum that we have to butcher up and do all this stuff too? Cause when I look into style, if you open up their website, it says that where all of Oregon public schools, Portland public schools are adopting it. They are, they were from two thousand sixteen. They're a fairly new company. They've only been around ten years. We don't have any data that are actually raising the science scores. They are funded by Bill Gates, the Carnegie Foundation, um, which is a progressive group that ties to the Council on Foreign Relations, which is a globalist group that promotes all the green energy and all of that stuff. Bill Gates, the very first lesson you open is lab grown meat. And so there's no way that I can look my constituents in the face of a ranching and farming community and say, I want lessons on how, how good lab grown meat is for you or a cell unit on that. When it's a slap in the face of the community that we live in. I have a list right here. These are all the lab grown meat companies. Do you know who owns them and funds them? Bill Gates. So Bill Gates owns and funds the curriculum or he writes, you know, funds this curriculum. Plus he funds the lab grown meat companies. So it's follow the money. And we don't even know if the science curriculum actually does what it says. And if you go on to the style website and you print out in everything, every lesson plan that they do, every single thing says, um, diversity, equity, inclusion. They put it into every single lesson plan. They want it in every single thing. They have checklists of diverse ranges of genders, sexual orientations. Um, making sure that women are promoted over men for the scientific field. There's massive, massive issues with this curriculum, like massive issues with this curriculum. And there's just no possible way. We have failed two bonds because we have a war going on in which our community and parents aren't trusting teachers. And we were, I was elected and I ran on a platform that said, I will keep agenda-driven curriculum to the best of my ability out of the schools because we, Kirk County does not want a Portland public education system going on here. And the headquarters for this Australian company for the entire United States is located in Portland, Oregon. And they're giving it away for free to schools if they adopt it by July. So there's a big push to get it by July. And to me, this is insane that we would bring something like this into our community that hasn't been vetted. That hasn't, we have, we don't see, you haven't brought the scores of how it's improved science scores for kids. And I have not had one teacher contact me. Not one teacher has called me and said, I absolutely love this curriculum. I really want to have this curriculum. And going back to the bond issue, if you want to ask the taxpayers for money, they need to trust that the school system is protecting their children. So I would think that teachers would come, because I think we have really good teachers. And I don't think that the teachers want to be politically and agenda-driven and divisive. But I would think that the teachers would say, hey, there, there's definitely issues with this curriculum. We've heard resoundingly from the community that they don't want agenda-driven curriculum and we'll find something different. But there, there's just so many problems with this curriculum. But I'm, I'm disappointed that it even came to the table, to the honesty. And I know that there's not a really good, like a super solid, perfect science curriculum out there. But this is at the top of the list for agenda-driven. And there's no way that I could look anybody in the face and say, you know, I'm going to hoodwink you and I'm going to put this stuff in our schools and I'm going to turn around and ask you to pass our bonds. Because we need to have mutual respect and trust in our school system. And this, this is not what the community and the parents voted for. They rejected resoundingly when wit and wisdom came in because of agenda-driven stuff. They rejected that resoundingly. And this is worse.
When we look at the different options, would D, that was one that we kind of thought about, might be something that could possibly work in looking at a pilot. Um, Carolina has been around for a very long time. I used that mu- many, many moons ago, um, in Texas. Um, so I'm fairly familiar with Carolina. So we could possibly do a pilot to see if that would be something to work. You know, just making sure that our teachers have something in their hands, um, that is high quality. But also making sure that our parents in our community know that we're listening, you know, to the values and kind of what, you know, they're seeking and just looking at somewhat of a, uh, you know, a compromise. Um, D could potentially, you know, be a choice. Um, just to make sure that we're adopting something that's the most appropriate. Maybe getting a little bit more time. So D is definitely an option up there. Um, and then in the meantime, while they're looking at Carolina and then potentially piloting, you know, a unit or two, you know, out of both to see what would maybe work come the spring of next year. In the meantime, we could do some supplemental and buy some bus kits to make sure our teachers have some experiments. Um, and some of the ready-to-go kits that are supplemental, um, in the meantime to use as well. So I mean, that's, that's, that's definitely an option.
Yeah. What did we pilot this year? Thank you, pilot.
Science, middle school science did not do an official pilot as they did the review of the curriculums. Um, they looked at what units would be, um, what lessons would look like. Um, they got together as a team and compared those across the curriculums that they reviewed.
Shane, is your objection to Inspire and Style or just the Style?
My objections, I don't, my obje- my objections just to Styles because if you look at, at where the company comes from and what they're promoting, and my problem is you do a curriculum adoption, you have seven years. This is not education. This is indoctrination. And I have no idea why you would even present something that you'd have to pick apart. You have to redo all these lesson plans and go through. And, and so I, I, I don't like the high school map, that, or the high school sci- like it's not, it's not perfect. There is no perfect science curriculum, but I am willing to, um, you know, compromise with the high school. Like yes, I, I trusted our teachers and Joel said we have all these controversial topics. Um, you know, policies in place that, that we'll be able to go through and look at those. Um, I think a lot of the high school stuff had to do with like leaning for gender selection for abortion. Um, and giving both, you know, sides on that. There was some, some stuff in that. There was some stuff with, I know that we can't teach. Um, you know, s- some of the stuff that happened to do with evolution, teaching the other side, which you can do under history. Um, you, you still can present that, uh, in a history perspective.
Did we pilot the high school? Have we piloted any science curriculum?
Pilots aren't typical. No.
So I, I'm willing to compromise on high school with the trust because by high school, your kids have pretty good critical thinking skills. I trust our teachers and our new superintendent to look at those controversial topics. But with the middle school, with the styles, absolutely not. Like this is ridiculous.
I will be careful next time I ask you a question because I'll get more answers than I anticipated. But, uh, I'm just to move this along. I wanted to move to adopt the McGraw Hill Inspire Science nine twelve curriculum. Then we can talk more about the middle school.
I'm certain.
Is there a discussion?
Yeah. So I just, I have questions with that. If, if we don't have data, we have very few kids taking, if I remember, I mean, we had like what, fourteen or seventeen kids? Why are we, is the curriculum not, the current curriculum we have not up to date? It doesn't meet the standards. Why are we changing it again if we don't even have data that says we need to?
The curriculum that they adopted last time, um, was the curriculum that middle school currently has as well as STEM scopes. And they do find that it's out of date. Um, the digital components of it don't meet their needs anymore. And they have moved further and further to using supplemental curriculum other than the standard curriculum. So they went into it knowing that they wanted to use something for the life of the curriculum and.
I'm sorry, but it's impossible to hear Carrie go with that. Just, I know she has to pay to see you guys, but at least in the bigger venue, so she was in my phones.
Yeah, I can scoot this way. So the question about Inspire Science. So we get these seven years because we know that curriculums, they need updating times change, information changes, data changes. Those kinds of things change. Um, and so the last adoption that high school science did was STEM scopes, which is current one that the middle school is using. And they felt like pretty soon after adoption, within a couple of years, they were moving to more and more supplemental policy there, um, supplemental curriculum. They weren't using what STEM scopes was completely. And they don't want to do that. They want a curriculum that is there that meets the standards, that helps get kids ready for the content that's in front of them, whether they're taking the O S A S or not. That helps them move through those core science courses. So they can move from earth science to biology to chemistry and physics. Um, and STEM scopes didn't do that as well. It did it pretty well at the early grades, but it didn't provide things for chemistry and physics. So they were having to find other materials for that as well. So Inspire really was a complete happy surprise for them that it actually had materials that went through all of the, the four major courses.
And Carrie, just to be clear, when you say supplemental, right? Is that them going out, finding supplemental material for that, that time period that for like that next week? Okay. Now I gotta go find my next lesson for that next week.
Sometimes, I mean, that's a that's a really simplified way of like.
Should I roll?
Right. That, and that's fine. And so what they do is they look at their standards, right? Like this is what 10th grade or 11th grade, this is what chemistry, this is what biology. This is where we're trying to get to. We're trying to get kids proficient at a majority of these standards and comparing that to the curriculum that they have. And so sometimes the curriculum, they're like, ooh, that's hard to find, or that doesn't seem to have a ramp up, or it doesn't seem to connect to the next unit. And so they would find resources that would either help provide some background knowledge. Like, hey, remember in eighth grade when we did this? Remember in ninth grade when we did this? Or, um, some extensions? Or even some supports for, um, EL learners or English language learners or supports for kids with disabilities on I E Ps. They felt like STEM scopes didn't do that. And Inspire Science definitely helps them differentiate learning across the four years.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion on the table to adopt McGraw Hill Inspire Science nine through twelve. We have a second on the table. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor to adopt McGraw Hill Inspire Science nine through twelve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hey?
So looking at your D, how do you pilot both at the same time?
Yeah, I, I can start. Well, I, I mean, that's okay. I can start because I've talked to the reps from both Carolina and Style about their piloting options. And in case this is something that we wanted to deal or go into. And both off. Both offer one unit pilots. Both offer one unit pilots for a pretty low cost, depending on the materials that you want with them. So Carolina will offer it at a pretty low cost or no cost if we have the materials that we need in order to do the experiments that are in Carolina's. Kind of content. Their rep was interesting. He was like, lots of science teachers have lots of things in their cabinets. So we can give you the paper or the digital copies. Teachers can print for that one unit. Our teachers would just have to decide which unit it is that they would want to pilot out of Carolina.
We have an opportunity to, to really go through all the pieces from the engage piece, possibly experiment pieces. And you have student reporting pieces, you know, so they would actually be able to go through an entire unit. And say, oh, we really like this part of it, but not this part of it. And kind of, and, and really experience all of the entire unit and then be able to give real feedback. So, you know. We completed all of it and not just maybe the beginning piece or an experiment or just a workbook page here and there.
Yep.
How long is a unit? How long would that be?
Four to six weeks generally. And then Style was very similar. There is a version of a Style pilot that can be done virtually for free. We can have digital access to those units or that unit for free. There is a. Pilot for Style that costs nine hundred and eighty one dollars, which is something to do with gravity. I don't know. They expanded nine point eight to one is some unit. For gravity. But anyway, what that does is it offers that unit plus all the physical workbooks. So the physical workbooks were out here for the curriculum review. They were the ones that actually supported the vocabulary. They had notes taking places. They had the glossary in the back. So many people who are here for the curriculum review and I actually really liked the Style workbooks. So there's a small cost for that and the nine hundred and eighty one dollars is for one unit. For sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade for all of their sections. Carolinas, they would be happy to support that. The cost goes up if we do all of. If we need especially the kits or the materials to send to us. It's about the same. There's a free version and there's about a thousand dollar version.
And then on E postponing, wasn't there, it was another issue with carrying over what you're currently using, wasn't it?
Yeah, we can do a one year extension of STEM scopes, which is what they currently have for about the. It's a little bit more than the cost of when you do a six or a seven year license. Curriculum companies across the board like you to commit to. The longer term and you get a deal, a little bit more of a deal with that. But we could certainly purchase a one year extension of STEM scopes.
Dr. Skinner, what's your experience with Carolina and Texas? I'm bringing in FOS kits.
I, I've used both. I mean, both are. Are really. Oh, Carolina and FOS. So yeah, so is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So I've used both Carolina and I've used FOS kits. I mean, FOS kits. More of a supplemental because you can now, you want, you know, you want to do an experiment on life cycles or rock formations or ball, you know, whatever. Gravity or pull and pull, you know, push and pull. You know, you, you, you know, you have a topic and you can buy the kit and it comes with, say, you know, enough for twenty five kids to do the experiment. So everything and anything, you know, it's, you know, if it needs sand, you don't have to go to Walmart and buy, you know, twenty five pound bag of sand. It comes with enough sand for twenty five kids. So it's kind of one of those pre made, you know, and there's some other things that they, you know, included, but I've used it mostly for those experimental kits because it's easy. Teachers are able to pick them up. And go with it. They don't have to really do a whole lot. Sorry. So I haven't used those. Yeah. And Carolina, it's been a long time. But Carolina's been around for a while. So it's been pretty steady in terms of a company that's been around for a while. Is that what you were asking? Kind of my, my experience.
You haven't had any complaints with Carolina?
Not with those two, the best.
I think it's worth noting that we have some protections in place in Canada that might not be as strong in other places. The first one is the fact that you do have a robust system. Sorry, we do have a. System in place, a robust system where every parent receives the curriculum for, and the syllabus for their classes at the beginning of. The school year and parents are supposed to sign off and return that. Presumably they read it before it comes back. It's usually an assignment to return your syllabus. Or lose five points or something like that. Usually the first assignment. I admit, many, many parents sign those and don't read them. They should, shame on them. After that, we also have the. The correct, the ability to modify the script. That was the presentation that was made at the last meeting. Was, and Carrie, thank you for that. It was a wonderful presentation that we can go in and change that curriculum. So if we sense that there's a concern about a particular question, a teacher can modify that question or delete that unit or substitute or no unit. That gave me great comfort when I found out we could do that. Then thirdly, we have policy I N B. Which gives us the ability to, the obligation to let our parents know when something controversial is going to be taught. So the parents can opt their kids out if they want to do that. They don't do that unless they know it's going to be controversial. But you know, once they get, they read the syllabus, if anybody wants to raise that issue, then there's another safety vest. And then lastly, with Dr. Skinner's proposal to make this a pilot, we're building in a fourth safeguard, which is the ability to pull the plug. At the end of the year, if this isn't working, as we test not one, but two curriculum. We need to come forward with some sort of direction to our middle school staff about what to do. As we approach the new school year, which begins in a very short amount of time. So I'm leaning, I do not want to get in the way of your objections and your passionately held beliefs, Cheyenne. I, I appreciate that you bring that passion to the table. So I'm, I'm leaning toward because of those protections. Letting Dr. Skinner pilot us through. These two and option D, and then having this discussion again in the spring, depending on what we find out from those pilots. Because I think we've built the safeguards in behind to do this. And I, we, we need to move forward with something. And not just spin because we've been doing that for three years.
I think the syllabus would have to be very specific. I know the current ones are very broad. Topics and it's not, it doesn't. I think portray to parents. That it's necessarily controversial because I don't look at climate change as controversial, right? Everyone has their own beliefs they're raised in. However, their parents raised them, that's controversial. But to me. Right? My kid has his own beliefs or, or thinking. And so I don't think anything of that. But if you. If you read me the question. Then it's controversial. It's the same thing with the lab grown meat. And so I think. If you're going to do that, you have to be more specific in your syllabes. Of these classes because I can tell you. I mean, health is the same way. It's just these broad generic eight topics that they cover. Well, what is in that topic? What do you actually cover? Yeah. So I think. I, I would agree with you Scott that I would like, I didn't realize we didn't pilot anything. So that kind of worries me too. When you change, I mean, you're changing now a group of kids like in high school, you know, they're, they're now. They're seniors or juniors are changing curriculum two years out of school. And why? Because we, you know, outgrew the other one. So it's not necessarily off of data or specific. Science reasons. It's, you know, we've adapted and technology is different. So I think that's kind of a hamster as well. So I would, I, I would move with Scott on piloting.
And I think. From what I'm understanding is on the syllabus, really break it down. Like, okay, we're going to talk about this. Well, this is what's inside of this and we're going to break that down just to make it more clear. That this is what's happening, you know, and, and maybe it's, you know, here's the first part of the year that we're going to be doing. And here's the second part of the year we're going to be doing. I think the more information out there, just it would ease. People's minds, it would ease the parents, the ones that read it, right, Scott? Is that what you mentioned? You know, and just make sure it, people are aware, you know.
Then you need to make sure the syllabuses online match the paper ones that come home because they do not.
And I also want to have respect for Dr. Skinner because we hired her to raise our test scores. And to make sure that. You know, that we're looking good. And so. It, it would be nice to have her input and for her to visit with the teachers and talk with them. And, and let her come back to us with a full. Recommendation of what she is going to. With her staff as well. So I would as well move for D.
So I would move. That we pilot Style in Carolina, grade sixty eight and twenty four, twenty five school year with a formal adoption in the spring of twenty four, twenty five. With directions to staff. To provide parents with a comprehensive syllabus at the start of the school year.
I second that. Um, do we have any more discussion?
I just want to make sure. So for your staffs, that they immediately have stuff in hands. The FOS kits are not voted on by the board. So make sure that they have what they need to get through this year until we get.
We can get the units for Style and Carolina. Like she said, they're not going to give us, you know, all of it. So we can pick that and supplement with FOS. On their menu because they're going to have to have a year's worth.
And then they use STEM scopes for the remainder. Then these one, these few, so they'd have. Like you said, one unit from Carolina, one unit from Style. The remainder is STEM scopes and FOS kits. I just want to be clear on what I share with.
So sitting here, we were right now in my, just without a whole bunch of time to think. I think it would be best to extend STEM scopes for a year. With the STEM scopes pieces kind of on hold because once, like you said, once we are done with the pilot and the pilot. They need something. And I think the FOS kits could be another kind of like, let's pilot some kits while they have a curriculum that they have been familiar with. That they have used in the past that they can jump back into. But I think the FOS kits would help supplement.
And I kind of wrote down around some priority standards, like the ones that we're really struggling in. We need to probably look and say, okay, our, you know, our kids struggled with earth, you know, earth science or, you know, like really pulled out some specific and say. Probably need to really hone in on that one for a FOS kit where they can have additional experiments and like maybe pull. Three, you know, priority standards that they were kind of struggling with and buy FOS kits for that. And then we'll have this, we could have the STEM scopes, you know, for that. Backup in terms of the in betweens. To do that. So my question is, do we need to make an amendment to include FOS kits now or is that a later conversation?
So did I always have that?
Okay.
Okay, you can acknowledge that we're using those, but you don't have to adopt those for board policy.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Well, from question, Scott, can I? Ask a possible amendment with reading that of the grade sixty eight to the twenty four, twenty five school year with the intent of a formal adoption? Because what that reads is you will adopt, come up with reconsideration of formal adoption. Because if you eat to the end and you don't like either one of them, you just right there says you're going to adopt them. Yeah. So I accept that as a friendly amendment. So you can change it to with a reconsideration of formal adoption in the spring of twenty four, twenty five. Most of you can.
Thank you.
That'll be.
Very, very like that language. Do we need a new second or is it?
It's, you're accepting my friendly amendment.
Your friendly amendment is accepted. Yes. Okay.
That's so friendly.
It's so friendly. We have a motion. We have a friendly amendment. We have a second motion. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Done. Thank you for all of your time on this, Carrie.
Thank you. A question on the syllabus is, are they still online somewhere? Because I couldn't find, I can only find them if I went into my kids' actual class.
Let me write that down as a follow up. The both of you sure.
Yeah, they were supposed to, but we looked after classes closed and we couldn't find them online. But when I went into parent view and went into a student, clicked on their class, I could find the syllabus.
Yeah, let me, let me dig into that.
To clarify that we are on the site.
Start of, start of next year.
Okay, four point three, interview survey report, Dr. Fox.
I'm back and I'm ready.
Back and ready.
Family survey. So if you are anything like me, school members, you hear from people that are very angry. And very happy. So this is the worst principle on earth. No, this is the best principle on earth. But we know that, you know, on a normal standard distribution, there's a lot of opinions in there. And that's why it's so important to hear sample size. If you're looking in your packet, I put the raw charts in your packet. These are just talking points that I'll project for you.
So we don't have that slide?
Yep. In your packet, you just have kind of the raw, the raw survey data. These are just kind of talking points. So on sample size, we had three hundred and six responses to our survey. This is the family survey. We had eighty six from the high school, fifty three from Crooked River and the middle school, and then it, it kind of goes down from there. So it's important to hear from a large number of sample size. So that way we kind of get a better picture or representative sample of how parents are feeling. Highlights in these charts, they're pie charts in your packet. Put it this way because they're kind of a little easier to, to see. So we had a question, the teachers and staff at my school adequately support my students' learning needs. Forty one percent of families strongly agreed with that, thirty eight. So that's really strong data, seventy nine percent. You know, about four or five families are feeling like their kids, teachers are meeting their learning needs. So that's something we're really proud of. Another one we're really proud of, again, we see eighty percent. We asked parents, do you feel welcome? When you come to your student school, eighty percent of parents either agreed or strongly agreed. So again, good to see about four or five. Overall, how satisfied you? So this is the last question on the survey. This is eighty four percent, no, sorry, seventy four percent. Three or four said good. Or in the, the four or five range. So again, really, really positive there. If you're looking in your packet. You have the, the pie charts. These are just easier to, easier to read. Areas to, to improve on that. This is one where for families who utilize our transportation system, transportation system, please rate your experience. So they had. Poor through excellent. So you can see here, this is an area we have to clean up. About forty five percent marked poor to fair. I took out anyone that said they don't know or not applicable. So this is an area that, that we'll work with Leland, Dr. Skinner and, and look to kind of make some improvements in the next year. Food service, this one always pops up. So we moved those families that didn't know, but you know, or about. Was that about forty one percent said poor, fair. So this is something where we can work with Denny. He unfortunately, when I shared this with me said. Just so you know, the O D E just reduced or the federal. They're reducing the sodium, the salt that we can put in food. So it's. I gotta figure out how to make this taste better with even less salt. So, so that one's going to be tricky, but I, I trust Denny and he's, yeah. So.
Happy.
Yeah. So he's gonna, he's gonna do his best to flavor that food up. And this is another one that, that I want us to work on. We asked parents if they had a problem or concern with an issue at school or a staff member. It was addressed in a timely manner. You know, we have sixty eight percent agreeing, strongly disagree. That means, you know, about one in three parents didn't feel that their problem was addressed adequately. So that's something that we want to work on and do some training with our staff. On. Another one that pops up, we have the question bullying is defined as repeated and targeted harassment. And then the question was, my child was directly impacted by bullying from another student this school year. Sixty three percent no, which is good. But thirty percent said, said yes, that they, they felt their child had been impacted by bullying. So that's another piece. Working with our elementary principals and secondary principals to have an aligned bullying intervention protocol is something we're going to start off in, in August. And then parents were able to answer this course. What were you most impressed with about your students' educational experience? And then for this, I take all of them. We use this process called coding or categorization where you, you kind of find what are the major themes and code them. So what families were most impressed with were a supportive and hardworking staff that really resonated in family comments. A lot of families talked about how their student had significant learning or growth. Another one, and we talked a little about this in the board goals, was people were very impressed with the abundant opportunities for students at our schools. C T, extracurriculars, dual credit, athletics, you know, the storyline, the quests, field trips, after school clubs. So that's something we really want to continue. And then this was an interesting one. So a, a number of parents are about, they got great communication from their students' teacher. Ms. Brumble talked about this earlier, like, oh yeah, my teachers keep me informed. But as I shift over on what are the major themes of the issues, communication also came. So this, this one's kind of tricky because I think we need to have a better standard procedure on how people are communicating. Because it seems like depending on your teacher or school, you get various levels of communication. So we want to standardize that and bring people so everyone's feeling that they're getting great communications. Another thing people would want to issues, they'd want to see us improve is bullying behavior and discipline support. That, that really resonated that people felt there were some behavior issues that they would have liked to see resolved. Talked about, this is another interesting one where more academic rigor as well as a balance and workload, you had. Uh, talked about, this is another interesting one where, um, more academic rigor, as well as a balance in workload, you had, uh. It's tough, cause you get one comment, be like, it has too much homework, and then you get another comment, says, my kid doesn't have any homework. So like finding, finding that right balance in there, uh, nutrition services improvement, like I talked about, uh, some facility issues. Leland is always the first person to ask me, like, what were my comments, so, um, we share these with, with our staff, as well as, um, transportation improvements. And then finally, there was comments on like, a specific issue with a specific staff member, uh, or, or another kind of resonating. Uh, and a reminder for leadership of the district of schools, keep our focus on students. Um, that, that really came across in, in a number of comments, is hey, make sure. Always focusing on your students, that they're your guiding principle, um, so that, those were the kind of major themes. Quick next steps, we're gonna refine our bullying conflict and behavior supports. Uh, like I said, continued innovation, I don't know how Denny's gonna do it with less salt, but continued innovation with nutrition services. Uh, what we do every year, we disaggregate the data, so we can see like where our hotspots are of like. Where communication was rated poorly, we can like, oh, what school, what grade, and we can be like, hey, let's, let's add some additional resources there. Yep, e- exactly, you can look at, at that, so we do that, and then con- continued, uh, professional development for, um, all staff, all our leaders. You know, district wide, uh, principals, board, teachers, you know, continue to improve, so. Uh, and then we're also exploring various, uh, Leon does an awesome job, just finding those places where we have to improve our facilities. Um, and, and making some improvements and looking at some timelines. Any questions on the family survey?
So Joel, do we already have a defined procedures for bullying, conflict and behavioral support? New stable refine, so we already have one, we're.
So there's this something called, uh, we call it the BIF, B I F, bully intervention folder. Uh, and this is at the high school, and there is, when there's a bullying case, they fill it out, they check what they've done. We need to refine that more across the district to make sure there's a consistent protocol used when we have a bullying issue, so. So there's one in place, but we need to refine it.
That's where we had this conversation last year.
BIF. I don't think I reported family survey last year.
Wasn't that the guy on the company teacher?
Alright, let's jump over to our, uh. So on the, the family survey that we just saw, uh, you have those pie, pie charts, then you also have the raw data on the employee survey. Yeah, this was given, uh, employees had the whole month of June to, to fill us out, same with the family, so we wanted to give plenty of time. Uh, who'd we hear from, from our staff, we had a hundred and forty nine respondents, we have about four hundred and fifty employees, depending on how you count. Coaches and, and whatnot, um, so we heard from, you know, around twenty five, thirty percent employees, which is a representative sample size. Um, a lot from, most Barnes Butte, uh, Kirk County Middle School was second with twenty six, twenty six, Kirk County High School. If you look, sixty three of the respondents were certified employees, that means mainly our teachers. Uh, twenty six percent were classified employees, our bus drivers, IAs. Administrators, two percent, and then some people, we left them mark other or leave it blank, just if they really wanna make sure it's, it's anonymous and don't wanna. To say, so same thing on a highlights, um, for our employees, I know what I need to do to be successful in my role. So we're at, is that ninety two percent agree, so a shout out to our administrators, directors for making sure. Hey, here's what I need for me, here's what you need to do, employees feel they know what they need to do. Um, I'd recommend my school site is a great place to work, again, uh, really, really high percentages, which is great to see that a lot of employees are saying. Hey, this is a great place to work. Uh, this is an interesting, uh, day-to-day decisions here demonstrate that student learning and safety are top priorities, this is another one, we're at, you know. Darn near close to eighty percent, so, um, that's what we want, we're getting that right message out, that we're here for student learning and to keep them safe. Uh, some areas to improve, uh, I receive appropriate recognition when I do good work. And this one hurts my heart, cause I feel this is something we're totally in control of, of recognizing people when they do good work, so. Um, you know, we're at sixty percent, so the hard part of seeing this one is like, oh, one in three employees don't feel they're, they're adequately recognized, so we can do better. Uh, and you have a plan on that, uh, of different recognitions for each month. Um, the leadership at my school has communicated a vision that motivates me, this is another one, I think we can just do a better job at. Uh, you know, this is education, this is, should be some of the most inspiring work we do, so making sure we're communicating that. Uh, and then this one, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily good or bad, um, I see myself still working at my school site in two years' time. Kind of wanna change this question, because. You know, someone could be going for, uh, you know, they're a teacher going into admin, or they're, uh, an IA wanting to become a teacher, so. So just because they're changing doesn't necessarily mean they're, they're bad, that's a bad thing, this, uh, particular, this is, uh, Nate didn't. Uh, he's the leadership teacher, and he just got a job in Hawaii, so he's leaving to, to go to Hawaii, so. It doesn't always necessarily mean a bad, not necessarily a negative thing, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that, but also in working with, you know, Jay on. You know, recruitment projections, making sure that we're aware of, hey, we expect, you know, some turnover, uh, moving forward. Again, major themes, what did staff say, what are you most, uh, proud about, your school and site, these are general themes. Um, our staff greatly value their colleagues, this was like the vast majority of them. People enjoy for the most part who they work with, they say, I love my team, you know, I love my principal, um, so that was really encouraging. Uh, again, staff love their students, a lot of comments, I love going to work every day, seeing those smiling faces. Um, most staff feel there's a positive work environment and culture. Uh, and again, it's interesting that these kind of mirror what parents say as, as well, um, there are great opportunities and activities provided for students in our schools. And then there, there, uh, there are some great leaders in our schools and departments, so those are based on staff comments, sort of like, I love my principal, I love my director. Um, that's really cool to see. On some things, uh, two other questions, are there any refinements that could be made for next year to improve student learning and safety? Uh, this was huge, and this is something we gotta, staff want more behavior systems and support, uh, that was clear. I've got, you know, this many behavior issues, and, and I don't know what to do with it, it's taken away from learning, so we have to get, get together and really brainstorm. And allocate some resources to make sure we're addressing that, that was clearly the number one. Um, also hearing from staff, our facilities, uh, security and spaces, are, there's some areas that they would like to see improved. Uh, you know, we just hadn't, like we talked earlier, we just have not passed two bonds, we know there's some facilities improvements that, that we need. Uh, similar to the parent side, the family side, we need to, staff say, keep our districts focused on students. Uh, you know, there's so many distractions this day and age for school districts, and staff saying, keep our district focused on students. Um, continue to enhance and clarify our sped process and staffing, that, that popped up a lot, so taking a look on that with, uh, Mr. Hayball. Uh, to see where those areas are. Uh, another one, uh, staff saying, I'm overwork, my workload is unmanageable, and we talked a little bit about that on the, at the council level of. Hey, if my caseload's six hundred on one person, um, so that came through as a, as a theme. And then finally, continue to train our leadership team across the board, building administrators, department leaders, district office board, continuing, you know, we all need to continue to grow and learn. Uh, and also, staff talked about finding, it, it's interesting, there was a lot of parallels between the family and, and staff survey. Uh, next steps, uh, just like before, we disaggregate all this data by school and department, so the school, uh, the, the principal is part of our, uh, back to school in August. They get all their comments, all their feedbacks, all their ratings, um, so then they can make, uh, building specific plans. Uh, we're gonna review that all by administrative team, as well as, you know, creating these improvement plans to address these deficiencies. There we go.
Oh, you're done.
That's it?
Okay.
Joel, when do the administrators come back?
Uh, it varies, so we have like two twenty five, so principals, I believe, come back August first. July, July thirty first, and then, uh, assistant principals are like, three days later, later, contractually.
Like, yeah, four days and students are.
So we booked out, this is new, a two-day board, or two-day, uh, administrator retreat, so that'll be August eighth and August ninth. Um, we'll have two full days for them to dig into this stuff, get some professional training and learning, um, so, so yeah, we booked in some time.
I just wanna point out, this is a vastly better survey than we saw one year ago. When it comes to staff and their attitudes, and of course, we had a lot of angst.
Yep.
Leftover from the election last year, but it's a credit, I think, to the administrators, that they have calmed down their buildings. They have got people focused on the work, and we're getting this report now, so. Goes to all the administrators who have handled that, this, this is way better.
Yeah.
Four point four, athletic coach training plan, Dr. H, and Mr. Stefanic.
Good evening. Let's keep this thing rolling, uh, this is in your packet, uh, it's a chart, so you can read it, uh. The board asked, I don't wanna say it was like, maybe the April meeting, um, the board asked, gave, directed the superintendent, uh. Create, uh, athletic coaches' training plan and gave us nine days, uh, we're bringing this back early, uh, so we have the plan in place, but we thought it'd be. Uh, prudent to come back and present it, so that way, if you have any feedback, we can make changes. Um, the fantastic, Mr. Adam Stefanic is our middle school assistant principal, but also the middle school athletic director. Uh, Mr. Rob Barner, our high school athletic director, is in Mexico right now, so he, he could not be here, but we've gone through this with him, and he was a big part of the, uh, training. Uh, what you'll see, okay, we have a three-pronged coaches' training plan for next year. Um, you know, number one, quality training for all coaches, if you work, this is that light blue square. Uh, so we have four trainings from the National Federation of High School Sports Trainings. Um, some of these have been available for some of the coaches in the past. What we're doing is we're making these, uh, we're requiring these of all coaches, so the ones that they'll take is the fundamentals of coaching. Um, all coaches will take that, uh, that covers kind of just big picture coaching, whatnot. Um, heat illness, uh, there's like a steroid, steroids, performance enhancing one, and then concussion training. So there's those four trainings that all coaches will get, and then in addition, there's, uh, those other ones listed with the bullet points. Those are all district required safe schools training, and, and those are train, trains that they already get, so. First prong, uh, all coaches will get, uh, a number of trainings, as you can see, uh, required. Okay, uh, prom number two, quarterly coaches' summits, uh, addressing key coaching themes, so this is the yellow, this is that next, uh. Portion, I'm sorry, this is small, if you, you guys can't read it, so, um. Saw missing apostrophe here, uh, which, you've been around, uh. So, uh, summer, summer coaches, that yellow box, so, here's what we've got, uh, August thirteenth. Um, we'll have a coaches' summit, um, all paid coaches are required to attend. At least three of the four quarterly coaches' summits, and the reason it's not four to four, if there's one in season. It gets really tricky to get coaches there, um, but the topics on these, uh, coaches' summits. Are ones that directly that, uh, Coach, Coach Barner, uh, Mr. Barner has noticed as, hey, we need some additional training, so. If we look, uh, for the summer one, August thirteenth, uh, our coaches will be training on effective communication with students and families. Professionalism, conflict resolution, and creating a positive team culture. Uh, the fall summit, uh, it'll be all about building relationships, equipment management, and then recognizing potential issues. And, and, uh, resolution strategies of, hey, if we've got this, this issue, how do we solve it when it's this big versus this big? Um, so being proactive on that, uh, we've got a winter coaches' summit, which, uh, the topics are planned to be. Understanding the individual athlete, utilizing assistant coaches, and fundraising procedures. And it gives an amen to that, because, uh, it's always tricky when we have rogue fundraisers going and trying to, trying to ring that in. And then finally, we thought on that spring coaches' summit, we're gonna, um, go through the year and then define what areas are we seeing our coaches need more training in. And tailoring that last summit to meet, uh, what we're seeing many deficiencies. Okay, uh, moving down to the third prong, so this is, uh, what we're calling preseason postseason quality calibration. Uh, and what we're looking at, cause this is the orange box down here, um, before the fall season, before the first practice, the athletic director. Will meet with all the coaches, review, um, the head coach evaluation rubric, or the assistant coach evaluation rubric. Cause the board said we want an objective standard that we're evaluating coaches by, as well as review the, uh, job descriptions, um. Then we have those for head coaches and high school and middle school assistant coaches, and then each coach will actually sign that, just like. Okay, I know what is clearly, uh, outlined for me and expected of me, so that's before the season. After the season, within one month of the season concluding, the athletic director will meet with the head coach. Review, uh, we do an end of year summary for, uh, that parents and students fill out. Right now, that was just a high school thing, and talking with Adam, he wants to expand that down to the middle school, so that way all our coaches are getting feedback from families and students. Uh, and then currently, the head coaches complete the assistant coaches' evaluations and survey feedback, so. That will happen for fall, winter, and spring coaches, so that right there is our three-pronged, uh, plan, and we welcome any feedback. Uh, cause we're wanting to bring this to you a little early.
So for the summer coaches, like right now, you have no, you have no cross-country coach at high school, so are they gonna be here by eight thirteen? To meet for three of the four, and if they're not, what happens then?
Yeah, the last update I got was, um, that there's an applicant for that, and they plan to have him hired in the next couple of weeks, specifically on, on coaching. On the cross-country coach.
And just in general, you don't have a coach for a sport, and eight thirteen goes by, how do they get three of those four? They're not actually.
Yep, so if they miss the summer one, then they would have to go to the fall, winter, spring to hit that three or four mark, so. And I've really encouraged, um, the educators to get these dates out now, uh, we don't have a spring one yet, but. Heck, if you know, this is my meeting in October, this is my meeting in February, you block that on the calendar, and, and you attend. Um, you, Adam, when I think about it, I was like, we're paying coaches, they. We're paying for this, so they need to attend.
And are these online, or are these in person with somebody teaching them?
Good question, the, the light blue, um, up top, those are all online trainings.
Right.
The coaches' summits are all in person, I actually heard, I don't know, Chris Dudley, I believe it was a blazer. Ran for governor, he is a guest speaker at the first, uh, coaches' summit, so, okay, cool.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was kind of my other question, is who is providing the.
Yep.
Information and leading the discussion.
So, um, we've identified, we being, uh, Mr. Barner, uh, Adams. Uh, we have identified the topics, and then he's also worked with, um, H D Waddell. Who was, uh, a principal, I think, in Ben for a while, then he left him to be the chaplain for the Oregon State Beavers football team. He's done a lot of, and I don't know his connection, but he's done a lot of like sports, like college G something. He's helping Rob kind of put this all together and help facilitate, facilitate these, and then clearly we have like guest speakers, I don't know, how they got Chris Dudley. Um, but when I met with him, he was like, yeah, not Chris Dudley, come to the first one, so, so Rob's kind of the facilitator, and then I think he's working with, um, various stakeholders to.
Is that gonna be an all-day day on news?
No, it's, uh, I wanna say hour and a half, two hours, the first one they tried, cause we highlighted this, I wanna say in April, and we did a morning breakfast. Um, so they tried to do it before work, uh, he said he's gonna try to do an evening one, uh, like a dinner, uh, cause we tried to make it, I, I think they're at. Uh, Metal Lakes Long Comforts Cafe. Um, he's gonna try evening one, and then morning, evening, the, cause it gets tricky with coaches, cause you know, you got evening practices, and you know, some, a lot of our coaches have. They're not teach, they, they've got other jobs, um, so he's experimenting with different times, but yeah, mainly the morning or afternoon for an hour, hour and a half.
No, coaches have to be OSAA certified with training of some sort, or?
I, I don't know if there's a specific OSAA training, I can look into that, these were the trainings that, that are, that I was told were required, so I can, I can.
Well, the district's safe schools training, so teachers and coaches, that's the thing, right, this is the name that teacher.
These are all, yeah, so any, uh, all employees, teachers, bus drivers, uh, there are standard trainings that, that we require of all employees. To make sure they're.
And OSA doesn't require any sort of classes, time, you don't have to be certified?
I can check, I believe that the NF, NFHS training course was the one that I think Rob was, was certain on, but that's something I can look into and report back on.
OSA does require?
For middle school, no, cause we aren't under that OSA umbrella, but possibly high school.
We can agree on that, and, and if there is a.
Well, NFHS only requires fundamentals of coaching, heat illness. The concussion and the enhancing drugs, that's the minimum, you need to be a coach at the high school level.
So I have one suggestion, I love this, but I think this is a great improvement. We'd make one suggestion in step three for the evaluations.
Yeah.
Which is that the way this is set up, the athletic director is taking final responsibility for the evaluation for the coaches. And we have learned by now, that when things go wrong later, and that athletic director gave us good. Report at the time that that all comes spins back around on the athletic director or supposedly missing something. It would be helpful, I think, to protect the athletic directors if the principal were of the building were required to sign off on that evaluation. So if somebody is there to challenge the evaluation that is given, if there's things that are being overlooked or swept under the carpet. So just add a line about a sign off.
But I think is that my understanding was the athletic director brings recommendation and the school principal is the actual one that renews contracts. So there is a double step.
But on the evaluation, that's the contract.
He brings the, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's something we can can definitely can do. I don't, I I don't, knowing our two secondary principals, I think they both would. Absolutely be fine with that. Uh, so we can look into, because you have the contract evaluation.
A parent who's not happy supposedly goes to the athletic director first after they go to the coach, not that that always works. But then I know they take their complaint on up to the principal if they don't get satisfaction. The principal's hurt. Where there may be issues and if they're just ignored in the evaluation, the principal can say, well, where where's this? What have you done about that?
So just another set of eyes.
Yeah, just one more. Things go wrong that saw that and signed off that way, which are counted.
So like you're saying, athletic director given evaluation and the school principal.
Well, no, I'm saying the athletic director, the principal sits down with the athletic director, reviews their evaluation, and if it's like all perfect five, no comment, but the principal's been hearing things. Then there's that opportunity for the principal to push back before they sign it. So maybe you should rethink this area.
What we can do is set this, yeah. Incorporate these refinements and.
Which gets rid of the allegation, what you were buying.
Did you have anything to add?
Nope. Any questions for me?
Did a great job.
So what do they take at the middle school level, Adam?
Training right now?
Yeah.
So as of right now, what they they do is they um obviously do the district required state school training. And then they all, all the coaches have to do the concussion training. Now, a lot of our coaches also coach at the high school level. So a lot of them have a lot of that additional training already, but this is gonna allow our coaches to get further in-depth training and be basically at the same levels around this school, our high school coaches. That was when out of my net, that actually was one of our biggest, I was like, oh, this will dramatically impact the the middle school and make sure that, you know, six twelve that were aligned, which definitely needs to happen.
The coaches summit, I, my only concern is that to cover any kind of in-depth and short amount of time. I'm not looking for an all-day.
Totally.
Thing, but it might need to be extended after a two or three hour. I know that's probably not what anybody wants to hear, but I just worry that we can't get an in-depth conversation, I think, in that short time.
It's interesting you said it, because that was actually what Rob and I talked the most about was, um. And making sure we're not just checking a box.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had lunch.
Yeah. So, um, this will be the second, you know, the August will be the second one, but I think maybe we can report back. Now Scott's gonna hold me accountable to this. Uh, maybe we can. Maybe we can report back uh after that one later in the fall to say, here's what we learned and here's the refunds we made, because there are refinements we're gonna make. Because I think you're right, that's. It it might pack a lot of those topics in and and we don't want to just be checking boxes.
Yeah. And the first one was a pilot. You said this this actual summer one is actually a second one?
Yeah, this will be a second one.
Okay.
I'd love to sit on the pause button.
We get your invite.
He just wants a premium.
No, I I do like that.
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
That's my last presentation.
Um, okay, five point O school board update, um, five point one scheduled, the school board and superintendent work session. Um, so these are just proposed dates. So Thursday, August fifteenth, four thirty to six thirty. This was going to be when broadcast meets with us for our work session. So that we can just establish our working um relationship in terms of norms and how we're going to kind of move forward with just our work. Um, so that would be on that Thursday, August fifteenth. So we really want to be able to confirm that date with, with you.
I don't know if that thing doesn't work for me.
Yeah.
Just the time or the actual date?
Well, and. Two to five, that's all I can.
Wednesday. Okay, so without down there, it's not work for Mr. Cooper. There's a fourteen forty for anybody. Is that what you're looking at next?
We set the Thursday the fifteen.
Yeah, so there are, you know, fourteen, so I was just gonna let them see. We have any. Uh, I don't have any comments on the forty.
We do double.
And we just have to see if Rob can. Is everybody good for the fourteenth though?
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought those dates were similar.
You know, they were, but well.
Did they get the dates they got because they were from Rob or do you know?
It's happened to all.
I mean, I thought they were. I mean, I wasn't here last time there. I remember the dates, you know, it was when I was on Zoom.
Awesome. Need to tell.
So four thirty to six. So I would have to just get with.
Well, she's gotta check with Rob. So at this point, we're potentially trying for the fourteenth now.
Same time, four thirty to six thirty. Let's see.
Let's put a hold on your calendars for August fourteenth.
Okay, let's see if he can do that, Mr. Hans. And since we're. We could do the, go ahead and look at the board, the policy work session, then we can come back and look at retreat at four thirty to six. I think that was already maybe a date. That was on the last, yeah, the on the twentieth. So I just want to make sure that that's on your calendar.
That's when O S B A was able to come for the policy that we have massive amounts of credit.
I'm still. I know she was like Spencer, he can attend this one.
Okay, so we probably should, we should probably tentatively, because we have to schedule when O S B A can come, that was the plan that we're waiting.
And so does that work if if we can secure? Okay, yeah. So the twentieth will work for the actual policy. Now we just need to look at five point two, which is scheduling the school board retreat. Um, that was the tricky one, I believe, that the last one when Joel was trying.
We've thrown out a lot of dates.
But my, I think the last thing that I heard was Saturdays were a little tricky on some of those. So we were looking at some September and October dates at this point.
None of, um, uh, Saturdays in September don't work.
So it's October, so October.
Or we can find another date sooner.
Okay. And I believe I heard that during the work day, like a Monday through Friday was not doable. So we were having to look at.
How long is the meeting, like four hours, six hours? The work session, the retreat?
Well, the retreat, I mean, when I was meeting with with Rob, we wanted to look at more of an all-day thing, so we could look at strategic planning, mission vision. I mean, additional data, start obviously the unity between all of us, model how we're gonna collaborate, work together. Um, just being able to have a full day so we can dive into the work and then looking at our culture and climate that we're gonna, our strategic plan for that for the year. Um, so.
And no dates in August are work?
Because we want. I mean, the sooner the better, obviously, but I think I was just told that.
Yeah, we tried a couple of August dates and those didn't work for the board. And then we tried the September Saturdays and we couldn't get anyone there. So. Yeah, I think we just need to find.
So the fall sports schedules aren't out yet, so I'm hesitant to block out entire days before an open. Activities will be if we're going out past August. I don't want to be the one that's like, oh, well, now we have volleyball on that day or now we have a ball on that day.
So the August dates, are we still saying that those are all?
Did we look at August Saturdays?
It was Jen originally, the one we had Jen couldn't attend.
And we can't do anything during the weekend?
Uh, as long as it's after three thirty, can you give me, I can, I mean.
I can, we do a couple four to eights, maybe?
Yeah, that's. Our own option. I mean, I mean, Rob prefers Saturdays just because we have a full day and everybody's really kind of zoned in and focused. I mean, obviously in the evenings, it's. A little harder to focus with it being late, um, and being able to get, you know, as much work accomplished, but that's the only option and it's seriously. Better than not.
The process is that sooner the better.
The sooner the better, for sure. Yeah. So it sounds, okay, so August, I'm hearing no Saturdays, right?
I know. What about a Sunday?
Why not do that? I can't after church, but.
No, we should not do anything on that.
Does the two different sessions from like a four to eight work or not?
That would be the only way I would, I would lock into a date, because I don't want to lock into a date and then there'd be a sports event on that night and I could have avoided.
You don't have to just, you know, check with Rob. The what are some potential dates in August for a four to eight?
What about Monday the twenty sixth?
I'm free on that.
In between. I'm good with that.
I'm good with the, on the twenty sixth, you think?
Is it four to eight or thirty two?
I think she has to check with Rob. Yeah, but I mean, just for like the tentative timeframe. Four to eight would be, but I mean, if we can't, if we can't make that work, then obviously.
Scott, can you make that work or is it?
Four to eight, okay, that's the twenty sixth. Okay, what about one? That's a potential. And let's maybe one, one more option. You're killing me.
I know, I'm just, I'm just throwing dates out. Somebody else threw out a date then.
I give the twenty seventh, which is Tuesday.
Hey, back to back.
We are. The twenty seventh work, yeah, four to eight. Okay, the six.
You better find the markup date in case that doesn't work for, um.
So I have the twenty sixth and I have the twenty seventh. So that is for everyone. Okay, well then I'll check this. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Hey. So if we just take care of all of five point one, five point two and five point three?
I think so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Skinner. Um, six point zero policy updates, six point one D F E A pre-admission to athletic events.
Say, return to the topic of policy D F E A from previous board meeting in which the. Policy was revised and passed three to one. So this would be, um. Second reading, but we need to pass by a majority for these changes to take effect. As requested, I also, um. Included another option for discussion if you want to continue. Pursuing the idea of athletic gate fees and I should also mention that I do want to, um. Let me state athletic gate fees, they start next month.
In August.
Our first home football, those are the main parts.
Yes, okay.
Which that may be a goal, but. We probably just don't have additional boarding months to continue if we want it and stay back for the current.
The idea was brought to us as a board, um, we all got an email on it about having, you know, the free athletic events. Having it free to everybody, but then have a donation box put out for those that still wanted to be able to donate. Um, you know, like if you were gonna, if we were going to a game and we wanted to, you know, we're just gonna throw twenty bucks and say, here, keep, you know, keep the change. You throw it in a donation box instead, but then if, you know, you truly, you know, were going to an athletic event that was free, you know, you could waltz right in or whatever. Do you guys remember that, you know?
I don't think anybody's gonna. I don't think people are gonna pay that much money. I, I, I wasn't here for the June form meeting on this, but I know that Anna. I trust Anna and she has our score a really good position financially, and I think that. It's bothersome, it's a struggle for you to have to move the funds around and you'd like to have some amount of money available, is that?
I will, I am fine with whatever the board wants to do on this. I'm not, I really, we can, we can do the pre-admission, we can go back to. I mean, I really want this to be a board decision. But it's fifty three thousand dollars. Essentially less if you were to implement season passes, which are some savings. Um, family passes and then any other changes that we would, so it can be less than that dollar.
And I'm assuming the basketball adult season pass is more expensive than the adult season pass for football, just because of home games and how many games are, is that correct?
I looked at the number of home games that typically occur.
Okay.
I don't know whether it's gonna do this, but I haven't changed my position at all. Where was it for June? I I think it is. Very challenging for those of us who are fortunate enough to have something that we can afford to pay that admission with. To be telling a good portion of our community that doesn't have something and is struggling to pay its rent and struggling to find food and struggling to pay their basics. That now you have to come and pay to watch your kid do something wonderful. I can't think of anything better for our community than have people gathering up. At Friday night football games or or baseball games or watching their kid run track or whatever. Uh, this is a community that lacks for things for people to do. You can go to church for free, that's a good thing. Uh, and you can go to sports games for free. That's a good thing. Everything else seems to involve drugs and alcohol. So I would, I very much think it is in the best interest of the community to engage parents, engage kids who have proud parents, proud grandparents, proud siblings there, watching them. Play their piece. I think the amount of money they make off of this is nothing for what we get back in terms of of building family, building community. And doing what's right for people who are struggling. A lot of our students, a lot of our families are struggling, and we should not add to their burdens. So I, there's no scenario under which either of these. I agree.
But which part? All of it.
All of what you just said. And who wouldn't hurt somebody watching a road game about slide? That's, won't talk to them.
The first. Policy that's, the one that's being proposed is just minor updates. That reflect reality, like the fact that the leaving is no longer I M C and. The, and the roster of athletes provided to the athletic director, those would be the only two changes to the current policy. That's the one that's being proposed. The second one that's there was just because it was suggested that if you want to continue that conversation, you'd have the language in order to to do that. Okay.
Well, we wouldn't need any of the language in option one.
Right, option one would just be the same thing that you approved last time, which was just a couple of minor adjustments and then we would move forward if you were to.
And Scott has to take everything off the blue line.
With Scott's proposal, you don't need.
Right.
A policy for that.
That's that, that was what I was getting at. He literally said, all you would need is the roster of athletes that's be provided to the athletic director and everything else was gone. So this isn't what. Was proposed at the last.
Charged for admission, you don't need a policy, because you don't, not saying who gets gets in.
So do you want to just renew the policy?
Well, that, to me, that's what Scott had put to the table last time, in a sense, was, I mean, the only words he left was a roster provided. Of athletes to the athletic director, because Rob said that was.
And we wouldn't need that at all. We didn't charge for this. We wouldn't need the policy. Correct, we would just.
I guess what policy have we been following this year when we went to note fees? When the board said, we're not charging. What was that, two years ago? We're not charging. So we left this policy in place, even though we weren't charging.
The, what changed was there was a resolution every year. There is a resolution every year that sets how much the fees are, and it was set at zero. But the policy wasn't a part of that discussion.
So why aren't we discussing that? Why aren't we discussing the resolution instead of the policy?
The resolution would be to change, we need to bring the resolution down, which we are going to do anyway for a different reason, for nutrition services.
Resolution would be your option to the fee schedule.
No, uh, the resolution would.
She just said the resolution, they, but they set it at zero dollars. So I don't understand why we're not doing the resolution and we're doing a policy. Because we're not even following this policy right now, because we chose to charge zero dollars for athletics this year. zero dollars for athletics this year.
With, I don't know why you say we're not. Oh, it says free admission.
But then we list like, you know, district residents sixty five and older. Well, you're also not charging sixty four and under.
Right.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. Why aren't we looking at the resolution?
The resolution is a one-time thing. You look at it, you pass it, it's done. And then if you want to change it, we have to bring a new resolution forward. And you have, without knowing which direction, you know, getting different direction from different people. There's a bunch of different ways I could have gone with this. I'm just trying to facilitate what I'm being asked to do.
Right.
And so if, if we do decide, if, if you all decide we want to stick with not having fees, then you probably should just eliminate this policy altogether. We want to continue talking about reinstating the fees, then we need to talk about how to brand policy.
Yeah, every year the kids come around with like football cards and stuff. What is, what is that? Where exactly do the gate fees go? Specifically, and then like all the kids are fundraising and like we put our businesses on the fundraising cards.
I, that's a long conversation, but um, so there's a funded athletics fund where the district puts in money from the general fund and all the gate fees would go into that fund as well. And that covers various specific things. It covers a certain amount of coaches for each sport at high school and middle school. It covers referees and officials, covers travel, the transportation, but not the hotels and the food and all that stuff. Um, and it covered the league dues. Everything above and beyond that is fundraisers. And so when the kids are out selling cards for football and eating cans and things like that, that's all fundraisers. And the history on that is however many years ago it was, fifteen years ago, when the economy dropped out of the bottom of everything, this school district, like, most of us were not here at that time, this school district completely eliminated athletics.
Okay.
And so what's been happening is over the years, we've been gradually trying to put more funding for that, towards athletics, but everything is not covered. And even before, you know, clear back in history when athletics were quote funded, all the sports wanted to do more than what they had just funding for. And so they were fundraising backwards. So there's two, every sport kind of has access to two places of money. One is funded athletics. The other is their own specific fundraised fund. And football, high school has its own fund. Football, middle school has its own fund, et cetera. Every sport has its own fund that they're fundraising for.
So we cut, I mean, so kids don't play anything, they play sports. Do we cut their?
The pay to play?
Yeah.
At the middle school, that is no longer, but there's no pay to play.
And then we don't charge them to have events. So how do we fund our sports and our coaches?
Comes out of the general fund.
It's, that's the fifty two thousand.
All of our instruction.
You are adding.
Yeah.
It'll just take that much more back out of the June.
Yep. And that's what we ended up doing that year, the, the, yeah, the decision was need to eliminate the gate fees, was we just transferred more out of the general fund to cover that.
So we have another uh, thing coming, a family approached about wanting to present to the board for doing a high school and middle school swim team, possibly partnering with Parks and Rec because we're the only district in central Oregon that doesn't provide that. Um, and we have a hundred and twenty swimmers and so trying to find some money to put a tent over our public pool so that we can make it year-round swimming. So then you know, there's a hundred and twenty kids that are participating, but they want to do a swim team year-round to. Redmond and Ben and all these places and money just doesn't come out of the air. And so we're, we have that coming down the pipe at some point, so we need to be planning ahead. I agree with you, Scott. I, I agree a hundred percent that it's difficult for families to make it and to pay their bills and to buy groceries. We eliminate all fees, like fees to play sports, fees to participate. There has to be something in which we're putting some money back, which to help support our district as well. Just don't know.
I'm sure I'll move to eliminate the policy P F E A.
So we have a motion to delete policy D F E A in a second. Is there a discussion?
I think Cheyenne's right. We have to find a balance of how we put money back in. And I think one way or another, it comes back around to the families that you're trying to avoid. I guess gouging to come watch their player play. So what do you do then? Up their fee to play? I mean, at what point, like, where do we balance this out? Like, what are other options if we didn't do gate fees to eliminate that large transfer out of the general fund? There, I mean, is there other options?
It's done. It's, it's already happened because this was, this is already balanced in.
Just this year, put out a donation box and see if we raise any money? And revisit this? Do we revisit this every year or is this just?
Every year, we need to adopt the fee schedule.
So I don't know, it's already, it's already done for this year, the fee schedule.
And we, you want to revisit every year, you need to leave that policy in place and just leave this fee schedule at zero.
I think what makes sense to me is every year when I bring you that resolution for the fees, just take that off of there. Because I don't think it ever should have been on the fees anyway. That was really, that, that fee schedule has nothing really to do, it has to do with class fees and participation fees and things like that. A gate fee is a community fee, not a student fee. So it make, and, and the, the resolution says student fees. So I think it never should have been on there in the first place. I mean, we should just take it off in the future.
Well, it's on there because you have no other control mechanism for it. It's the only place to put it.
Convenient place to put the price. And it was a thing that gets published. So everyone can see, you know, what are the prices of things. And our fee schedule, you know, ten years ago was, it was many more pages than it is now. We've done nothing but eliminate fees over the years rather than add.
Okay, but this next year, as we move through, I know this year it's done, but as things get more expensive, you know, fuel is more, transportation costs more. I don't know if coaches get raises. I don't know how that works. I mean, to what Cheyenne said, how then do we get money back in if we don't have the gate fees? Because I know, like I said previously, like we pay a ton to watch our kids play this course, they do. But everywhere except for county, I pay to watch my kids play. So it's hard for me to balance that. Then we're not putting that money back into our own kids. So I'm, I'm asking, is there another way to balance putting, I mean, aside from a donation jar, do we have another way or means that we can fund, I don't know if it's money into the general fund and to the athletic, because what's going to happen is then the kids have to, you know, go fundraise more or parents have to then, you know, come out of their own pockets to travel somewhere because now we can't afford the bus driver or whatever it may be. So I'm, there's, I think Cheyenne's right, there has to be a balance, but I don't know what that looks like.
And every year I'll bring you a budget and that budget will have a funded athletics fund that will balance. And it will require money being taken out of general fund to be put into that. And every year it's going to have to go up. At some point, I may have to say, look, this is, this is a lot more money coming out of the general fund than you may want to have happen. And in that case, you either then say we have to cut some of the expenses that go towards athletics, or we have to cut some of the expenses that go somewhere else. And so that's why every year it's my job to make sure that I balance everything out and bring it to you in a way that I think you're going to be okay with. But if you're, if you're ever not, then you bring it to my attention.
I think there's also another consideration, which is in the twenty twenty seven, we're going to see the data center is starting to roll back onto the tax rules. That means for Cook County and for City of Prideville, they're going to get twenty-five percent increases in their overall taxes paid to their systems. A huge windfall. The Cook High School District will get none of that because the state's equalization formula will kick in and that'll end up rolling in to make Salem richer instead of us. But there's no reason that our kids using the city and county money shouldn't also be able to benefit from that large S and that windfall and be able to provide them with a quality athletics program, quality community events, quality spaces, and even a cover for the pool if that's where we choose to go. There's a huge opportunity in front of us and a huge opportunity to plan that if we can engage our city and county counterparts in thinking about kids as part of the spending equation.
One, if you're just looking for, you know, how do we start recouping, um, we heard the idea of uh, charging visitor, visiting teams and fans. So that way our, our county residents and families aren't paying, but we are recouping some of that money from our visiting. As you said, that's a common practice, so it would be a sum up here and it'd be, be a big benefit to our community.
So like how we just have a donation box and charge visitors. See how that goes this year and then reevaluate. I mean, so we have something coming.
Most we don't put the fees in, I don't care what we do. But you're talking about charging your visitor. If we're gonna do that, which I'm perfectly fine with, then I will send my motion to delete the, the F E A.
Okay, so we're withdrawing the motion to delete policy D F E A. Can we have a second on that? Yes, we do. Scott seconded it. So with that being said, what I hear people saying is we're going, we would like to, if I can, go forward with no gate fees, charge visitors and have a donation box out for this year, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion for that and then second that if that's what you want to do?
So is that motion already made?
Uh, that motion particularly has not been made. I was just kind of doing a recap to make sure we were all on the same page and not on a different page.
I move that. So.
You.
I'm moving to put a donation out for local and judge visiting.
Okay, I second. Okay, we have a motion to um, not charge gate fees for local residents, charge visitors, the visiting teens, put out a donation jar. Is there any discussion? Are the logistics even possible on that? Sure, I understand. Are the logistics of this actually?
You're actually going to be making less money.
Workable.
So we, you would mean to which years and look at the option two and state that we are going to charge a fee? And then state what that fee is going to be. And somewhere in there, you would then need to say, um, these are um, pass for county residents.
Okay, so we're still in discussion mode. If Redmond is coming over and you're an everyday Joe just getting off work, coming in to watch your kid play and the gate person doesn't know that you're the average Joe from Redmond and says, oh, I'm here to watch my kid play. Okay. Are you actually going to ask them for their driver's license or resident card? Kind of like at the dump, you know, you have to.
This wasn't my idea, so don't forgive me.
Very long lines and adventures.
And so I'm just like, I'm, I'm asking, so I want clarification.
What if you're an illegal?
So that's, that's my hesitation. Like, are, are you going to ask?
Can I just point out, you could leave well enough alone and discuss this in the springtime during budget?
About moving there? I'm about moving there, yes. Okay. One more time. We have a motion on the table and a second. Mister Holliday, do you want to stick with that motion?
No, I do not. I withdraw it.
And our second person, would you like to withdraw your secondness? Okay. Okay, so I'm recapping another time that we're going to leave well enough alone on this with free admission and correct?
Between the policy, I'll tell you on the website, you would know that it's. That went through.
Is that correct, Mister Cooper?
I believe that's where you're at.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the table and a second?
Or you don't?
But, because we're leaving everything alone?
Oh, actually.
Thank you, Mrs. Logan, for that fun time. Okay. Here we go. Seven point O finance report, seven point one finance report.
This is where I'm comfortable.
Hey, you go.
All right, I have a finance report in front of you and it is, um, we are now in July, so we're in a new fiscal year, but I will continue showing you reports for the previous fiscal year. It will continue to be adjusted through September as we get through audit. And I won't even bother bringing you a report for the current fiscal year until October. Okay, that's when we get all of our new staff in the system, that's when we get all of our calculations done about how much every employee will cost. Um, all those things happen. So, uh, the report that you have in front of you is still for last fiscal year. There's a couple items that I want to just point out and I can go through every line and I do that, but I just want to show you what I think will be interesting for you. Um, property taxes, line one on your page three. You'll see that my estimate to year end is less than what's actually been collected. Which you might think is weird. The reason for that is we have year-end adjustments that we have to make under accounting rules that have to do with deferred revenue and accounts receivable. So I'm estimating just based on prior activity, prior years, that it might go down a little bit from what it actually looks like right now. Um, same thing for the state school fund, line four. What I'm estimating that we will book as revenue is less than the actual cash that we've received. And that's because I expect a little money back. And that's kind of been a normal thing ever since, um, early graduation has become very popular. And it's just because of the way O D E does their, the way that they calculate how much money they're going to spend us, doesn't get finalized until next May. So I'm booking that liability right now so that next May, you don't say, oh goodness, Anna didn't tell us we were going to owe nine hundred thousand dollars. We'll just look at that and. So then the other thing is, the ending fund balance is a combination of lines twenty-three and twenty-four, and those are projections. I'm assuming we'll need about two point three million dollars to roll forward. Um, and then I'm assuming that all above that will be in the transfers line number seventeen. And that does show is over budget, but it, it's not a problem because a lot of that is going into another one hundred level fund, which doesn't count against the budget. Anybody have any questions on the financials?
Thank you, mind and full assistance. But what happened with the federal forest fees? Why did they go up so much?
I don't know why they went up so much. It was, but I did, I did research it and I looked and it's just what came to the counties went up a lot. And then we get twenty-five percent of what goes to the counties. So we've always seen forest fees go down. And so it's, it's been, it was a surprise that they went up. What's interesting now is it used to be that forest fees were equalized to state school fund grant. And that changed a couple of years ago. O D E realized that they were out of alignment with federal regulations when they were, when they were doing that by putting those forest fees towards the equalization formula. And so they stopped doing that. So that actually helped us a ton. Well, now it's helping us a lot by five hundred thousand dollars. And then they're going to go back and see if there's a way that they can, um, give districts that money back for, for the few years that, um, that they were doing, that they were, that they were equalizing it that they shouldn't have been. But the only way they can do that is if they go to the legislature and ask your specific money to be there. So we would get three years worth of back.
And given that your interest was two hundred and eighty percent of what you projected, can I give you my retirement to invest in?
As long as we can put it in. Yeah, the super.
Amazing.
Same stuff. It's all we can do. Oh, one other thing, um, on the bar measure, follow-up, uh, today was the the deadline, the early bird deadline to submit the awesome grant application. Leland was right on top of it this morning, got it done right away. So it's us, even if we don't qualify from a building needs perspective, we can hopefully give them that first in line. Although there's a lot of districts that will probably go out for November bar measure. So our, our odds are a lot lower. But I still appreciate that. Was on the wall about that. Thank you, Leland. Much appreciated. That's it. Okay. Thank you, Anna. Uh, public comments. Here we go. Um, if you wish to make a comment, please complete a comment card prior to the start of public comments. Uh, if you're viewing online, please indicate you would like to speak in the comment section. When you're recognized, please state your name, any group you're representing. Keep your comments to no more than four minutes. Eric, do you have a timer for that? Okay, thank you. A group of visitors with a common purpose, designate a spokesperson for the group. If you wish to reflect with the board, consider an agenda item, please contact the superintendent at least one week prior to the next board meeting. And the board does not hear complaints against any personnel in open session. If you have a complaint about a specific staff member, please contact the superintendent or the board chair. Normally I wouldn't talk that fast, but we're looking at nine forty right now. Uh, first up, uh, Mr. Redenberg. Sorry, let me catch you up.
Well, as a, a public citizen, let me be the first to, uh, in open session. Welcome, uh, Dr. Skinner to our district. Thank you. Uh, let me preface, uh, my remarks tonight with, these are opinions that I hold. And, uh, if some of my, some of my facts are a little askew, it's because I rely on, uh, public information. Education is useless without the Bible, Daniel Webster. A recent data report ranking students in various categories shows students in Oregon ranked twenty-ninth in economic well-being, twelfth in health, sixteenth in family and community, forty-third in overall education. I can remember a day when primary education used to be encouraged to be preparatory for moving on to college. Competition in the class, competition for entry as a freshman into college was focused in my high school years in that direction. America's colleges and universities were once the best in the world. They contributed immeasurably to America's status as the most powerful, productive, prosperous, and generous nation on the planet. Unfortunately, those days are long behind us. Today, from kindergarten through twelfth grade, in government school systems, teaching reading, writing, and math, undergirded by biblical morality, is gone and has been subjugated to Marxist indoctrination. From kindergarten on up, we rarely find the Communist Manifesto identified specifically in public schools, but the principles therein are routinely used to divide children against one another based on race, skin color, or the language their parents spoke in another country. God Almighty gives us the responsibility to care for, nurture, and train our children from birth until the time they can take full personal responsibility of their own choices. Their educational maturity starts and ends with us. Now, I don't have students in this school district, and I've told you numerous times when I've spoken here, that, uh, I'm just, uh, trying to make up for probably the, uh, the actions and the involvement that I should have had when my kids were in school. But I think we need to give some serious consideration of what we're doing here.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Irving?
I'm, I'm going to do my remarks to you if you don't mind.
Okay, okay. Um, Mrs. Seans?
Good evening. Um, so I was on the, um, community committee for the science curriculum. And, um, I am just made that, um, it looks to me, maybe that's going to proceed even to be piloted. I thought, um, sorry, I'm tired. I thought the curriculum, um, was pretty alarming. Not, not because there are controversial topics in there, but because of the way that Stiles insisted that there was a correct answer for some of that material. So, um, the, the, the primary reason that I wanted to speak tonight was Mrs. Brumble's comment about, uh, syllabi. So in April of twenty twenty-three, I believe it was, I came before the former board and I said, we have a problem with the syllabi that are posted on the Cook County High School website. Um, specifically, there were numerous syllabi that, um, listed grading procedures that violated board policy and that violated state law. And there were some disciplinary, um, procedures in some of those syllabi that also violate, also violated board policy and other things to due process. Um, my concern is that if we are going to be using syllabi as sort of a stopgap measure for informing parents, that's one thing. But what I noticed is that immediately after I presented the information to the prior board, um, it was my understanding that that, that the syllabi were going to be reworked, I guess. But then they were yanked off of the high school website and they've been gone all year and I didn't say anything about it. But what I know about parents, being one myself, is that when your kids are in school, you are overwhelmed with everything that goes on. And I think that the people who are sitting in the audience tonight are most likely, um, community, they would describe themselves as community members instead of parents at this point. Um, they're here because they have the time to devote to trying to improve the system. And I think that the syllabi need to be posted back to the high school website for all of us to see for transparency purposes, particularly if we are going to be using them to communicate that there is controversial topics in Creighton. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tony?
Uh, Dan, interested time. I'm just gonna resort to email too. Other than I took an aspect, you said aspect of pilot. I took aspect in the seventies. It's been around for a long time. So, yeah.
Okay. So you're going to email? Okay. Okay, um, public comments. Damn, look at that. Guys are fast. Okay, upcoming dates. Um, nine dot one, Open House Elementary Schools, August twenty ninth. It'll be four thirty to six o'clock. I'm going to assume all these upcoming dates are going to be on our website.
We are.
Okay, uh, nine point two, Open House Middle and High School, September third, four thirty to six. First day of school for grades one through six and ninth grade is September third. Uh, first day of school for seventh, eighth, tenth, through twelfth will be September fourth. And then first day of school for our little kindergartners is September ninth. And this meeting is.
For the next meeting, wondered if we have an agenda topic. The legislature passed Senate Bill Three in the last session requiring comprehensive restoring the requirement for comprehensive financial education to be delivered. We are supposed to have a plan for launching that in September, which we have not seen. Could we get a report on that and see what we're doing here? It is a very big, broader definition of what practical skills kids should have when they graduate to what we had.
There you have it.